City Commissioner.
Deputy Vice City Commissioner, Commissioner Smith. Please, and join me in my seat. Thank you. We'll begin our city commission meeting with citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to speak to us on non-indigenous islands. And we have one person signed up already. When you come up to the microphone, ask that you look at this block here. This will tell you, uh, you have up to three minutes to speak to us and it will give you your own count down so you can self-monitor. Please introduce yourself with your name and the city in which you live and then we begin to speak. So Colin Clark first. And I'm only so far. Yes, I want to pass those, get those Nancy Island show passing on. Thank you.
Evening.
Evening.
Uh, my name is Colin Clark. I am a longtime resident of Oregon City. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-one, uh, currently in the Hazel Grove neighborhood. And I'm here tonight, uh, representing some of the thoughts of many of our friends and neighbors in the Hazel Grove neighborhood. Um, a couple of years ago, the city acquired a three and a half acre parcel of land as part of the Pilgrim Run development, uh, just south of Hazel Grove. Um, my understanding at that time was that the city generally didn't like to acquire parcels of that size for the park department. They preferred to have five acres or larger. This one's currently three and a half, uh, mixture of commissary and future park land. Um, the reason I'm here is, uh, and this represents some of the thoughts of many of our neighbors is there's currently a parcel adjacency, which is on the market. It has been for a little bit of time. It's a two and a quarter acre parcel. Uh, it was owned by the Hunt family. And many of our neighbors feel this would be a nice enhancement to what is already there as, as part of the parks which are planned for the future. Um, it would give a total of about five and three-quarter acres. It contains some water runoff area, wetlands, as well as a significant stand of mature evergreen trees, which are definitely a, a visual enhancement to the neighborhood. Um, now, the Hunt family has recently been relocated out of state and have had their property on the market. Um, they are somewhat motivated in that they can't purchase a new home in their, their current location until this property sells. And that's coupled with, um, the current state of the real estate market. Um, kind of makes it look like this might be an opportune time to acquire a piece like this for future park development. Um, now, I don't really know what the proper procedure is to go about this. I saw the meeting was coming up, so I brought this in and I just kind of wanted to get it out there. We, uh, people in the neighborhood would indicate they would readily sign petitions or come to meetings or whatever's necessary, uh, to, to further look at this and, and I really don't know what the procedure is, so I'm starting here.
Okay, well, this is, uh, as good a place as any. Um, we'll pass this over to Scott Archer, uh, who is head of parks and, um, we'll, we'll see where it goes from there. Thank you for bringing our attention.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything to say?
Oh, thank you.
I see no other speakers, so we will continue on the agenda. Oops, my agenda didn't come on. I'm, uh, must be destroying all the monitors tonight. Thank you. You're giving me all the broken ones? I don't either. I'm sorry about that. Um, because I really were using the the automatic, the specific comes back and back to life. Um, let's see this, uh, looking at the agenda and we have a, uh, an item needs to be pulled from the consent agenda, agenda that is on this evening, and that is item, uh, J under the consent agenda. That will, uh, is pulled by staff. It's not, not quite ready. Are there others that, um, commissioners would like pulled for separate consideration?
Mayor Norris, would you like me to, uh, move down and then you can have Rockies and I'll move down here? Your monitor?
So I can have the monitor.
All right, have a brief break while we get this present, okay? Okay, while we build with technology, um, are there any other items that we would like to reorder or pulled from the consent agenda, uh, this evening? Is there anyone that wants to talk about the declaration of appropriations? Okay, let's pull G off the consent agenda for separate consideration. Any others? Nancy, all okay? Okay, good. Then we will take the agenda in the order which it is listed. First, we have a series of public hearings, some of them, uh, could be, uh, they're required by law, of course, and, uh, we have a three, two of them that are involved with our adopting the budget. So I'll call Dave Wimmer up and I'll extract this to the microphone and we'll begin with resolution ten dash eleven, which is the adoption of the budget for next year and the levy of taxes for fiscal year twenty-ten eleven.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. For you, you have the resolution on adopting the budget and, uh, of course, there'll be a public hearing involved. Just letting you know what's in there. There, you know, on April nineteenth, you Budget Committee approved a budget of, uh, ninety million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and approved a property tax rate of four dollars and point one-five-nine cents per thousand and, uh, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-dollar levy for the bond of debt for the fire bond. We are not levying our full permanent rate of five oh-five-seven-one as a result of the fire annexation promise. Since, since they approved budget, I have incorporated four changes into those numbers. Now, I'll go through them. First was a increase of thirty-eight thousand dollars in materials and services of the city commission budget for the E O T consulting project. Second, uh, was a increase of a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of revenue and personal services in the police budget for the new Tri-Met police officer who has been approved. That was happen after we approved the budget. So the new general fund is now nineteen million, six hundred thousand and one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Third is a decrease of forty-two thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars to the library. Uh, for the library county tax transfer for taxes and a six hundred and ninety-eight dollar decrease in the children, state children's services grant, just because Mo had a little bit better estimations from the county and the state than we did in, in April when we did the budget. And the final was a fifteen thousand dollar increase in material services and business license fund with a resulting decrease in the contingency, and that was for a payment to the, the new farmer's market that was approved also after the budget. So from what we had in the approved budget, the total budget is increased by seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and the new total budget for all the city funds is ninety million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. And following that is the resolution.
I think that's just that two hundred.
A resolution ten dash eleven adopts the budget in amount of ninety million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. And it makes appropriations for the same amount. And it imposes a tax from general fund of four dollars and point one-five-nine cents per thousand of assessed value and assesses two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-dollar levy for the bonds and the fire fund. And it also categorizes the tax so that the general fund gets the four dollars and fifteen point nine cents per thousand and the fire bond gets two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Thank you, Mayor Magister. He's distinct, um, for presentation. Commissioner Smith?
The addition, um, from the business license fund for E O T I C, was that the was that the presentation that we didn't know we had to pay for until it was already given? Is that what, which is like twenty, was twenty-five hundred or something?
Uh, well, it's total's got to be about thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty.
Okay, but that's what that was.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Oh, I thought that that was for, was not for the current consulting contract.
Yeah, he said that's what I thought.
I thought it was the current consulting contract was the thirty-nine thousand.
No, oh, Mr. Smith was referring to the A K T study.
Yeah, wait, yeah.
So that's the current contract?
That, that was not, that's not it.
Okay, that's, that, that, but that was a last year's study.
That's actually in the, well, you know, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, I think in, in those.
Right, that's the next issue. I mean, that's the next, the next item, right?
The supplemental.
Yeah, supplemental budget, I believe, has, uh, in there.
Consulting contract. Yeah, I think that there was a, I think you used the word C H P, um, and it.
I said E O T, I'm sorry.
Yes, I, I think that was where the confusion occurred. Did you get your question answered?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commission questions? If nothing, may I have a motion, please?
Need a public hearing.
Oh, you're right, a public hearing. I will open the public hearing so that the members of the public may comment on, um, any item in the budget or, or the budget you told. Seeing no public who wishes to come forward, I will close the public hearing. And now, ask for a motion on the budget, please.
I move to approve resolution number ten dash eleven, adopting the fiscal year two thousand and ten eleven budget, making appropriations and declaring and categorizing, categorizing property benefits.
Thank you. Second? Second, moved by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner West. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, answer the vote, please.
Senator Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes four zero. Next, we have the supplemental budget item, which is item ten dash eleven, resolution ten dash one.
Yeah, there's, uh, that item B is a supplemental budget. And supplemental budget is required when the changes are greater than ten percent of the expenditures in the budget. We do other budget adjustments, which there is one on a consent agenda when it's not ten, but this one's more formal and requires public hearing and public notice and all that stuff. But anyway, there resolution ten dash twelve has four, four, four funds are involved. First one is the police building reserve fund. They're starting to get involved, they're going on their remodel planning and things like that. So we're moving a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from capital outlay into, uh, material and services for the consulting fees. The second is in the business license fund. And that's to, there's what, fifty, or is it six, fifty-three thousand? Is that right?
Fifty-three thousand.
For to, for the commissary, the partners audit. And the, the third one is a community development fund. We.
Okay, what, what is the commissary, each partner's audit? That was what I thought that. Are, are you sure that's not for the end of the Oregon Trail?
C H P, no, right, twenty-eight thousand. And farmer's market, thirty-five thousand.
We did a C H P.
Thirty-five and then two thousand, five hundred for the presentation, I think.
Right, right, right. It's probably, maybe a few hundred dollars more than what's the actual, and I just rounded it to twenty-eight thousand.
So this is for the contracted services of A K S. A K S, yes, A K T. Okay, not the audit. Well, you're calling it an audit of consultant report? Okay, and that's the twenty-eight thousand?
Thirty-five thousand for the, the new farmer's market.
Okay, right. Am I clear on that? I am, I guess. Okay, thank you.
And the, uh, third item is on the school exercise tax, which is coming in greater every year than my budget. So we're adding two hundred thousand dollars to cover, probably won't be quite two hundred thousand dollar increase, but uh, we're making room for three hundred and eighteen thousand. That's all in and all out for this, the new school exercise tax.
And that will go up as construction increases in our community.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not bad news that we're increasing.
Thanks.
Uh, the fourth is increase in the business, let's see, it's in the code enforcement fund. And we spent more on nuisance abatement costs than we had estimated in, let's see. Originally, we're going to have a transfer from the business license fund to here because we're going to increase fees and hire persons, but we didn't do that, so I just took that back out again. The fifth item is related to the Warner Melanie Construction. There's, there's four hundred and eleven thousand dollars more for the water S D C fund this year than was expected.
So that's over and above what we see, we see from the federal government stimulus?
Uh,
It's the local.
No, it's not. I mean, it's more, more, they had more capital expenditures in this year than she was expecting, so.
Related totally to that one project?
And the last one is, uh, for the Parks and Rec Rusty Fund. They bought a, uh, kitchen seamer with donated funds. That was twenty-five thousand dollars. So we're, we're actually, you know, there's five, six funds were affected by this resolution.
Okay, um, questions for this winner? Commissioner Smith?
Okay, just, just going back, I'm not a math teacher. Okay, so as far as I remember, the original A K T study was not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. And what happened was we had to then pay for, uh, the presentation, which off the top of my brain was twenty-five hundred. So how did we get to twenty-eight thousand to twenty-seven-five hundred?
I, I, the crowd is the twenty-eight thousand, so.
All right. Yeah.
Okay, uh, other questions? And may I have a, um, should we open the public hearing? All right, I will open the public hearing. If anyone come to comment or wish to comment on the supplemental budget for this current year. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And now, motion, please?
Um, I'll make a motion to move, um, approval of resolution number ten dash twelve, adopting the supplemental budget for fiscal year two thousand and nine-ten.
Thank you, second please. Awesome. Moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Nacita on resolution of ten twelve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes four zero. Next, this is also yours, Mr. Webber.
Oh, yeah, we're here after this. It's gonna be a happy camp, probably back.
Well, this is a good one because this, uh, is the, uh, state of, what we need to do to receive our state shared revenues annually and requires action by us. Would you like to talk about that briefly?
Mayor Commissioners, you have before you items sixty, which is resolution ten fourteen. This is resolution we bring for you every year. It's required by the state in order for us to receive our state shared revenues. It's required to have a public hearing and sort of discuss a little bit where are we going to spend the money. And we did, when we did, went through the budget, went, as part of the budget, the revenue and expenditure. Uh, just, just to highlight that there are seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars of state shared revenues that go into the general fund from, uh, liquor tax, which is six hundred and eighty thousand, through the liquor tax and revenue sharing. Those are both liquor tax things. And it's forty-one thousand from cigarette tax. There's also a hundred and fifty-three thousand from the nine-one-one tax, which goes directly to the the police revenue. That, that's also general fund. And there's one million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand that goes into the street fund from the gas tax, so we're talking about two million, four hundred and nineteen thousand oh nineteen dollars of state revenue sharing that this resolution allows us to receive throughout the year.
In other words, a very important res- resolution.
It seems like sort of a dying star that we still have to do a resolution like this, but if you don't do it, you don't get it. It's worth doing.
It, it is. And as an aside, while we're on this topic, um, when we talk about the legal Oregon cities resolutions that we, we want our state organization to, um, to work on, um, to, to not have the state tap the state shared revenues for cities is a very important piece. Um, it, it will be, it will probably be tempting and, uh, uh, it, it could affect every city in the state for those revenues to go down. It'd fluctuate slightly, but it's a, it's a big chunk as you see two-point-four million dollars. All right, may I have a motion for, um, this? Oh, a public hearing, thank you, yes. All right, public hearing is now opened. That's come to speak on this topic. Seeing no one, I will close public hearing. And now, a motion, please.
Okay, I move approve, approval of rev- resolution number ten dash fourteen, declaring Oregon City election to receive state shared revenues for the fiscal year twenty-ten eleven.
Okay, moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Smith. Further discussion? May I have a vote, please?
Senator Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner, Mayor Norris?
All right, motion passes four zero. Next item on the agenda is also, will be a public hearing and probably won't be quite as, um.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you very much for your attention to all of our budget details. And, uh, the development code amendments that we're going to discuss next have been, uh, this is our fourth, I hope, fifth. Um, face-to-face discussion and hopefully tonight we'll at least have the first reading on an ordinance that will begin to codify our, um, new amendments, so.
Evening Commissioners. Uh, but may I, I'm going to hand out a handout real quick that we put together, um, and then I'll explain that and walk you through it, um, as I work through my presentation.
The Division Director, Senator Conko, our Development Director. Planning Director. Community Development Director.
Not too confused with the Development Services.
Thank you. Um, at our last, uh, presentation before the, the commission, uh, we brought forward what we onward, the final amendments, uh, to the development code that we've been working on. As you may recall, um, when we adopted the code amendments, we included a six-month provision, uh, to come back and look at those code amendments. So that's what we've been working on. And as you, we presented earlier, this went through the planning commission. Uh, they did recommend your approval and we brought it forward to you for review and your consideration. At the last hearing, um, we, we've included into these code amendments based on, uh, the direction from the commission, uh, inclusion, inclusion of the Yakima Tribe in, in terms of notification. We amended the geologic hazard overlay map to include a fifty-foot buffer around slopes in excess of twenty-five percent. And then we, we maintained the two-hundred-foot buffer around historic landslide areas. And then we also amended the, the definition of geologic hazards, uh, the definition to coincide with the newly adopted map that we had. So all those changes have been incorporated into the, um, code amendments that you have before you today. There were no other changes other than those. The last, uh, remaining item addressed seventeen forty-one, which is our tree protection mitigation section of our code, which is a new section. And there was some pollution to dead and dying and the definition and concerns about humans destroying trees and whatnot. And I believe, um, our city recorder Messiah has put onto your dais an email that I believe all of you received and I received as well from, uh, Commissioner Neely on, on Monday night. So, um, in those, he was concerned about how we account for what we call a hazardous or diseased tree to make sure that the tree doesn't become hazardous through, um, someone going out and, and either girdling the tree or hitting the tree or just in some way i- infecting the health of that tree in order to get out and mitigating on the property. So we've worked, um, the last two days and I apologize we weren't able to get this to you earlier. As always, when we change one thing, it tends to have some trickle-down effects. But we believe we've captured the intent of what Commissioner Neely, Neely was concerned about. So the first handout I've given you and backtrack, in the email that Commissioner Neely gave you, he had identified one section of the seventeen forty-one code addressing how we identify hazardous or diseased tree and recommended adding some language concerning human activity. And what we run into is when we're trying to write a development code, especially for residential land use actions that are performed by staff, we have to have a clear and objective standard, something that's not a whole lot of discretion involved in that. And when we started thinking about, well, what's human activity or what's a human cause, um, that, that gets pretty broad and, and, and to enforce that becomes a little bit difficult. So what we decided to do and, um, to try and address Commissioner Neely's concern was to change the definition of what a hazardous or diseased tree is. And then, in chapter seventeen forty-one, which is the tree mitigation section of the code, to offer a clear and objective standard and then an alternative. As long as you have a clear and objective standard, you can come up with another standard which an applicant can voluntarily choose to use, but allows the community development director and staff much more discretion in their decision-making process. So we believe we've addressed the legal concerns for clear and objective, as well as Commissioner Neely's concerns about, um, addressing those impacts to try and skirt the mitigation requirements. So the first handout is seventeen oh four definitions. So for a hazardous or diseased tree, means a tree that has a disease that is expected to kill the tree or that presents a significant risk to life or property as determined by a certified arborist. To the extent that the community development director determines that the hazardous or diseased condition of the tree is a result of intentional action, the condition of the tree will not affect the requirement to mitigate pursuant to section seventeen forty-one oh six oh. An otherwise healthy tree that may become a hazard to a proposed future development shall not be considered a hazardous tree. The rest of that definition remains the same. So what we've said here is that you have to have a certified arborist to determine if the tree is hazardous or diseased. And then I have the discretion when reviewing that application, if there's some evidence of human activity which caused that situation, I can say that's not a hazardous tree. You need to mitigate it per the standards of our code. And then the second section is concerning an otherwise.
I just want to jump in here, uh, as I was getting with the city manager, he had some suggestions on language that I think improved it significantly for readability for, for what, uh, we, we talked about. Tony hasn't heard this before either, but, um, you know, as you read through that, that definition, it's, it, it gets somewhat problematic. And what, uh, what the city manager suggested is the, the definition, hazardous or diseased tree means a tree that has a naturally occurring, so to insert naturally occurring disease that is expected to kill the tree or that presents a significant risk to life or property is determined by a certified arborist. The extent the community development director determines that the hazardous or diseased condition of the tree is a result of intentional action, the removal of that tree shall require mitigation. So we take out a, a chunk. The removal of that tree shall require mitigation pursuant to section seventeen forty-one oh six oh. So everything between intentional action and pursuant. I, I think that just makes it clear from someone who isn't used to dealing with these codes, um, what it is, what it, what impact that has, so.
And then, um, the second part of that is the, an otherwise healthy tree that may become a hazard to a proposed future development shall not be considered a hazardous tree. So example, if you have a, a stand of Douglas Spurs and you cut into that stand, put a road in, and then the arborist comes in and goes, oh, well, now that we've cut into the stand, there's a blowdown hazard. So that would not become a hazardous situation. We're, we're looking at the hazardous situation in the, in the, in the context of the existing land. Not, I'm going to put a house here. This tree is five feet away. Now it's a hazard. You create, the, the applicant or the property owner, the developer has created that hazard. They don't get the, to, to opt to, um, bypass the mitigation requirements. Um, so we believe that's addressed Commissioner Neely's concern about the human, um, creation of that hazardous or diseased situation. And then on the second handout I, I presented tonight, on page two, under seventeen forty-one oh six oh, what you see highlighted in yellow is a combination of language being relocated as well as new language. And the, under subsection A, the yellow at the end of that paragraph is just a relocation of pre-existing language. So the number of replacement trees required on a development site shall be calculated separately from, in addition to, any public or street trees in the public right-of-way required under the community forest and street trees. So you can't, you're required to put street trees in, you can't count those as mitigation. Then we created a new process, and this is the clear and objective component of, um, a. Then we created a new process, and this is the clear and objective component of addressing the code changes. Section B, the applicant shall determine the number of trees to be mitigated on the site by counting all the trees six inches deviation, minimum four and a half feet from the ground or larger on the entire site. So you need to go out and identify every tree on the site. And you can either, A, I'm sorry, one, trees that are removed outside of this construction area shall be replanted with the number of trees specified in column one of the table. And trees that are removed within the construction shall be replanted with the number of replacement trees required in column two. So what that says is, you've got fifty trees, you're gonna cut fifty trees down, you're gonna replace fifty trees. Clear and objective. No discretion involved with that. Or you can go under number two, if you choose as an applicant, to, for diseased or hazardous trees, when the condition is verified by a certified arborist, be consistent with the definition in seventeen oh four one three sixty, may be removed from the tree replacement calculation. So if you want to have a certified arborist come out, verify that the tree is hazardous or diseased for the definition that I just presented you tonight, those hazardous trees could be removed. And then that gives me the discretion to also determine if those trees are hazardous because of development or human activity. So kind of a long explanation, but I believe we've addressed the intent of Commissioner Neely's concern.
That's a pivotal discussion on that one, since he wanted to sue this as a plea. Questions about this or? I think it does fulfill what he was certainly concerned about. Okay, continue then.
And with that, we have no other recommended changes at this point or other outstanding issues that we're aware of in the commission. We are requesting the first reading of ordinance number ten dash one zero zero three, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City adopting amendments entitled twelve, thirteen, sixteen, and seventeen of the Oregon City Municipal Code.
Commissioner Seda.
Thank you. Tony and I have got to ask you about the tribal notification section. I'm looking at page twenty-one of the file, or not the redline version, but it seems that the language is the same in both.
What page did you say?
Twenty-one, the top subsection D. Well, there's two numbering systems on this. One says page.
At the bottom or the PDF number?
Well, I've got page three of five in the center and then on the lower right it says twenty-one.
Twenty-one of the staff report.
So it's not.
It'll be around page twenty-four.
On my monitor.
It is, it's on page twenty-four, twenty-three and twenty-four.
On my monitor, it's page three of five and page twenty-one. Okay, we've got two different versions here, I'm not sure what's going on.
Maybe we're not on the same thing.
Is there a redline at a?
I think I'm on the, you have the final version. Final development code amendment. And on my screen, I'm looking at page three of five in the center and page twenty-one in the lower right.
Page twenty-one of one hundred and seventy-one up at the top.
Okay, well, we have little numbers on the left-hand side. So because when you put the pages out there, you can tell us the page.
Actually, my screen doesn't have that bar on the left.
Page twenty-one out of one hundred and seventy-one.
Twenty-one, right here.
Yeah. Correct. My recollection of my discussion with you and the city manager was that they were going to be specific tribes notified. This subsection two says a letter or email from the applicable tribal cultural resource service and as designated by the Oregon Legislative Commission on Indian Services.
Four tribes that we identified, that we agreed to are from the CIS list. Those are the four identified tribes.
Okay. Deliberate on that. What does the CIS say? The four identified tribes with roots in Oregon City? How does the CIS identify these tribes? What, why are there four? When there's numerous tribes in Oregon? How do you get, how do you get from this language to the four that you and I talked about? So it's the.
Those four tribes identified on the CIS, those four tribal representatives. And then it had the list of all the tribes that they represent. You may recall at the last, at the last meeting where we presented that, that these would be the four tribal contacts. And those four tribal contacts were right off the CIS list. And then we have provided you that documentation that.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, this language, a letter from the email, a letter or email from the applicable tribal resource representative is designated by the Oregon Legislative Commission on Indian Services. I imagine that the Klamath tribe is designated by the Oregon Legislative Commission on Indian Services. I imagine that the Burns-Payuch tribe is designated by the Oregon Legislative Commission on Indian Services. I don't see how you get from this language to the four specific tribes that you and I discussed with the city manager.
Those specific tribes that we brought up.
With Celestis, the Grand Ron.
Were directly off the CIS contact page. We took that right off of their page, that those would be the four tribes we'd be contacting.
That last time.
Yeah, but those four, those four tribes are not mentioned in the text of our.
You would have them mentioned.
Right, because. This paragraph section two doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't specify which are the four tribes.
It defers to whatever he's done there. Indian services being seen on the page.
So if it's, if it's not a burden, and I don't think it is, I'd rather have those four tribes just enumerated in that section. By their proper names and accumulation should probably be designated by a department and just the Confederate tribes in name for the accumulation.
With that understanding that that would be added, can we move forward?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Other questions then about? Okay, then are we ready for the public hearing? All right, I'll open the public hearing on our development code amendments. So you wish to speak for us regarding these amendments. Many of you have testified, I know previously, so we appreciate that. Saying that, I will close the public hearing. And then it's an opportunity for someone to make a motion. Is there some?
Yeah, if we're gonna actually mention those in the language.
Yeah, my recollection is Celestis, Grand Ron, Warm Springs, and Umatilla.
Yes, that's my two major tribal groups. So the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ron, Celestis, Umatilla, and Warm Springs.
So the, the names that were on the CIS, so we took off for the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ron, Confederate tribes of the Celestis, Confederate tribes of the Umatilla, Confederate tribes of the Warm Springs.
Yeah, and the Confederate tribes of, yeah. And I think they have formal names that may be a little bit longer, but I'll defer that.
Okay, are you ready then? So. Oh, okay, let me check, check it out. I thought it was in what we looked at last time. Is there another section? Okay, good, since I shouldn't have disappeared.
What's the other section? Seventeen sixty-two oh four oh.
Page.
Page two is gonna be page one twenty-one on the number pages. One twenty-one.
There it is. Without the names of the tribes again. Okay, if you're going to add it in that place as well. Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm sure the language, would you anticipate? A letter or email from the applicable tribal cultural resource representative is designated by the better tribes of the Grand Ron, Celestis, Umatilla, Warm Springs, or Yakima? Or how would the language work?
That's the question. Okay, so as soon as we have a motion, then we have to ask our attorney to actually read those sections. So he'll be reading the section seventeen point forty-one tree protection as well as these sections. So while he's getting ready to read, which always is entertaining, I have a motion for adoption of this huge body of work which has been worked on for so many months. We'd like to be the ones to make the landmark motion.
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance number ten dash one zero zero three, which amends titles twelve, thirteen, sixteen, and seventeen of the Oregon City Municipal Code.
Thank you. Approved by Commissioner Smith, second of my Commissioner West. For the first reading of this ordinance, Mr. Baisman, you ready?
Right. All right, ordinance number ten dash zero zero, ten dash one zero zero three, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City adopting amendments entitled twelve, thirteen, sixteen, and seventeen of the Oregon City Municipal Code with following, as posted with following amendments. First, section sixteen oh eight point oh two five preliminary subdivision plot, required plans of preliminary subdivision plot shall specifically and clearly show the following features and information on the maps, drawings, application forms, or attachments on map, site plan shall be a minimum scale of one inch fifty feet, site plan, a detailed site development plan showing the location dimensions of lots, streets, pedestrian moves, transit stops, common areas, building envelopes, setbacks, all existing proposed utilities and improvements, including sanitary storage, warm water, and water facilities, well-impermeable surface creative, including street sidewalks, et cetera. An indication of existing proposed land uses for the site, if required by staff, pre-application topics, subdivision connectivity analysis shall be prepared by a transportation engineer licensed by the state organ that describes the existing and future vehicular, bicycle and mystery connection between proposed subdivision and existing or planned land uses on adjacent properties. Subdivision connectivity analysis shall include shadow plates of adjacent properties demonstrating how a lot of street patterns within the proposed subdivision will extend to and from such adjacent properties and can be developed meeting the existing Oregon City Municipal Code design standards. B, traffic transportation plan, the applicant's traffic transportation plan information shall include two elements, one, a detailed site circulation plan showing proposed vehicular, bicycle transit, pedestrian access points, connections, the existing systems, circulation patterns, and connectivity to existing rightways or adjacent tracks, parking and loading areas, and any other transportation facilities in relation to the features illustrated on the site plan. And two, a traffic impact study prepared by a qualified professional transportation engineer licensed by the state organ that assesses the traffic impacts of proposed development on the existing transportation system, analyzes the adequacy of the proposed internal transportation network to handle the anticipated traffic and the adequacy of the existing systems to accommodate the traffic from proposed development. City and jury may waive any of the foregoing requirements to determine that the requirement is unnecessary in a particular case. Natural features plan and topography, preliminary grading and drainage plan, applicant shall submit a map illustrating all the natural features and hazards on the subject property. More practical within two hundred feet of the property's boundaries, the map shall also illustrate the approximate street grade of the site at before and after development. Illustrated features must include all proposed streets and cul-de-sacs, location and estimate volume of cuts and fills, and all stormwater management features. This plan shall identify the location of drainage patterns and courses on the site within two hundred feet and fifty feet of the property's boundaries. Where practical features that must be illustrated shall include the following proposed and existing street rightaways and other transportation facilities, all proposed lots and tracks. All trees proposed to be removed from the final plot with diameter six inches or greater diameter dressed in breast height DBH for all natural resources here pursuant to chapter seventeen point four nine, including all jurisdictional wetlands shown in a delineation according to the Corps of Engineers Wetlands Delineation Manual, January nineteen eighty-seven edition, and approved by the Division of State Lands and Wetlands identified in the city of Oregon's city local wetlands inventory adopted by reference in the city of Oregon City Conference Plan. Five all known geological and flood hazards, landside faults, areas with water table within one foot of the surface and all flood management areas pursuant to chapter seventeen point forty-two. Six, location of any known state or federal threat or endangered species. Seven, all historic areas or cultural features acknowledged as set in any federal, state, or city inventory. Eight, all wildlife habitats, further than advertised features listed on any of the city's official inventories. The archaeological monitoring recommendation for all projects that involve ground services, applicant shall provide, one, a letter or email from the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office, Archaeological Division, indicating the level of recommended archaeological monitoring onsite or demonstrate that the applicant has notified the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office and that the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office, as office has not accommodated within forty-five days notification by the applicant. And two, a letter or email from the applicable tribal cultural representative of the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ron, Confederate tribes of the Celestis, Confederate tribes of the Umatilla, Confederate tribes of the Warm Spring, and Confederate tribes of the Yakima Nation, indicating the level of recommended archaeological monitoring onsite or demonstrate that the applicant has notified the applicable tribal cultural resource representative of the applicable tribal cultural resource representative has not accommodated within forty-five days notification by the applicant. If after forty-five days after notice from the applicant, the Oregon State Historical Preservation Officer, the applicable tribal cultural resource representative scales to provide comment, the city will not require the letter or email as part of the completeness review for the purposes of this section. Ground services defined as movement to native soils, community development director may waive any of the foregoing requirements. The community development director determines that the requirement is unnecessary in a particular case and that the intent of this chapter has been met. Also, section seventeen point oh four point one three six oh, amended to re-trees hazardous or diseased. Hazardous or diseased tree means tree that has a naturally occurring disease that is expected to kill the tree or that presents a significant risk to life or property as determined by a certified arborist. To the extent that the community development director determines that the hazardous or diseased condition of the tree is a result of intentional action, the removal of the tree shall require mitigation pursuant to section seventeen point four one point oh six oh. An otherwise healthy tree that may become a hazard to proposed future, to proposed future development shall not be considered a hazardous tree. Hazardous trees may include, but are not limited to, dead disease, broken split, cracked leaning, and upward of trees, tree harboring communicable diseases or insects of a type that could infest and cause the decline of adjacent or nearby trees. May also be identified as a hazardous tree, as well as section seventeen point four one point oh six oh. Regarding trees, removal and replanting, mitigation option one. A applicant's redevelopment is selected, applicant shall ensure that all healthy trees shall be preserved outside the construction area defined in chapter seventeen oh four to the extent practical. Compliance with these standards shall be demonstrated in tree mitigation plans prepared by a certified arborist, horticulturist, or forester, or other environmental professional with experience and academic credentials in a forestry or arboriculture. At the applicant's expense, the city may require the report to be reviewed by a consultant arborist. The number of replacement trees required on the development site shall be calculated separately from, in addition to any public or street trees in the public right-of-way required in the section twelve point oh eight community forests and street trees. B, applicant shall determine the number of trees to be mitigated on the site by counting all the trees six inches DBH, minimum four point five feet from the ground or larger than entire site. And either one, trees that are removed outside of the construction areas shall be replanted with the number of trees specified in column one of table seventeen dot forty-one point oh six oh dash one. Trees that are removed within the construction area shall be replanted with the number of replacement trees required in column two. Or, two, diseased or hazardous trees, when the condition is verified by a certified arborist, be consistent with the definition seventeen point oh four one three six oh, may be removed from the tree replacement calculation. Regulated healthy trees that are removed outside of the construction area shall be replanted within the number of trees specified in column one of table seventeen point four one point oh six oh dash one. Regulated healthy trees that are removed within the construction area shall be replaced, replanted with the number of replacement trees required in column two. More section. Seventeen sixty-two point oh four, plans required to complete application for a site plan and design group shall be submitted except as otherwise, except as otherwise in subsection one of the section, application shall include the following plans and information. A, a site plan or plans scaled containing the following. One, sending the information showing streets and access points, pedestrian and bicycle pathways, transit stops, and utility locations. Two, the site size, dimensions, and zoning, including dimensions and growth areas of each lot or parcel and tax lot, and assessment map designation for the proposed site. Two, the site, uh, site size, dimensions, and zoning, including dimensions and gross areas of each lot or parcel and tax, but an assessment map designation for the proposed site immediately adjoining properties. Three, contour lines at two-foot contour intervals for grades zero to ten percent and five-foot intervals for grades over ten percent. Four, the location natural hazard areas on and within a hundred feet of the boundaries of the site, including A, areas indicated on flood pay maps, flood plane maps as being within a hundred year flood plane. B, unstable slopes defined in section seventeen forty-four oh two oh. C, areas identified in seismic conditions, map in the conference plan, a subject earthquake or seismic conditions. Uh, five, the location natural resources on and within a hundred feet of the boundaries of the site, including fish and wildlife habitat, existing trees, six inch or greater in caliber measured four feet above ground level, wetland stream, natural, wood areas, areas of significant trees or vegetation. Areas designated as being within the natural resource overlay district. Location of import historic or cultural resources on and within a hundred feet of the boundaries of the site. Seven, the location, dimensions, setback distances, follows existing permanent structures and improvements, utilities on or within twenty-five feet of the site and the current or proposed use of such structures. Eight, the, uh, location, dimension, square footage, building orientation, setback distance, proposed structure improvements, utilities, and proposed uses and, uh, structured by square footage. Nine, the location, mentions, names as appropriate of all existing planted streets, other public ways, sidewalks, bike routes, and bikeways, pedestrian bicycle access ways, and other pedestrian bicycle ways, transit streets and facilities, neighborhood activity centers and easements on and within two hundred and fifty feet of the boundaries of the site. Ten, the location, dimension, names as appropriate of all proposed streets, other public ways, sidewalks, bike routes, and bikeways, pedestrian bicycle access ways, and other pedestrian bicycle ways, transit street, and facilities. Neighborhood activity centers and easements on and within two hundred and fifty feet of the boundaries of the site. Eleven, all parking, circulation, loading, and servicing areas, including location of all carpool, van pool, and bicycle parking spaces required in chapter fifty-two of this title. Twelve, site access points for automobile, pedestrian, bicycle, and transit. Thirteen, onsite pedestrian bicycle circulation. Fourteen, outdoor common areas, proposed open space. Fifteen, total impervious surface created, including buildings and hard ground surfaces. Sixteen, the proposed location, dimension, material of fences and walls. B, a landscape and land drawn scale showing the location type of existing trees, six inches of grade and caliber measured four feet high above, four feet above ground level. And vegetation proposed to be moved and to be retained on site, location, design, landscape areas, variety sizes and spacing of trees, and plant material to be planted on the site, other pertinent landscape features and irrigation systems required to maintain plant materials. C, architectural drawings and sketches drawn scale and showing floor plans, elevations accurately reflected, grade, and exterior materials, while proposed structures and other improvements as the will appear in completion of construction. D, materials poured in no large size and eleven inches by seventeen inches, clearly depicting all building materials with specifications as type, color, and texture of exterior materials, proposed structures and electronic version may be accepted as an alternative approved by the community development director. E, an erosion sedimentation control plan in accordance with the requirements section, chapter seventeen point four seven. And the public works erosion incentive control standards and a drainage plan developed in accordance with the city drainage master plan accordance, chapter thirteen one two, and their public work storm water and grading design standards. The drainage plan shall identify the location of drainage patterns and drainage courses on within a hundred feet of the boundaries of the site where development is proposed within and identified hazard areas, those plans share flat concerns identified in hyd- hydrological, geological, geotechnical development impact statement. Is that? Is that three, four, five? Oh, there it is, okay. F, the legal description of the site. G, an exterior lighting plan drawn scale showing type and height in the area of illumination. H, archaeological monitoring recommendation for all projects that involve ground services applicant shall provide. One, a letter or email from the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Division indicating the level of recommended archaeological monitoring onsite or demonstrate that applicant has notified the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office and that the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office has not commented within forty-five days of notification by the applicant. Two, a letter or email from the applicable tribal cultural resource representative as designated by the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ron, Confederate tribes of the Celest, Confederate tribes of Unitilla, Confederate tribes of the Warm Springs, and Confederate tribes of the Yakima Nation. Indicating the level of recommended archaeological monitoring onsite or demonstrate that the applicant has notified the applicable tribal, uh, cultural resource representative and applicable tribal cultural resource representative is not commenting within forty-five days of notification by the applicant. Did I, uh, miss something there? Okay. If after forty-five days notice from the applicant, the Oregon State.
If your case review that for me.
If after forty-five notice, days notice from the applicant, the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office, the applicable tribal cultural resource representative will provide comment, the city will not require the letter or email as part of the completeness review for the purposes of this section, ground services defined as movement of native soils. I, uh, I, such special studies, reports, as community development director may require to obtain information to ensure that proposed development does not adversely affect the surrounding community or identify natural resource areas or create hazardous conditions for persons or improvements on the site. Community development director shall require an applicant to submit one or more development impact statements described in section sixteen point one two point oh five oh upon determination that, one, there is reasonable likelihood that traffic safety or capacity improvements may be required. Two, the proposal could have significant adverse impacts on identified natural resource areas, including areas designated as being within the natural resources overlay district. Or three, the proposal would be located on or could have significant adverse impact, impacts on natural hazard areas, including the geological hazard and flood plain overlay district. And the community development director shall determine which types of development impact statements are necessary and provide written reasons for requiring statements. Development impact statement shall include information described in section sixteen point one two oh seven oh, sixteen point one two oh eight oh, and sixteen point one two one two oh. The community development director may waive the submission of information with specific, specific requirements of this section or may require information in addition to that required by specific provision of this section as follows. One, the community development director may waive the submission of information for a specific requirement upon determination that either that the specific information is not necessary to the value of the application properly, or that a specific approval standard is not applicable to the application. If submission of information is waived, the community development director shall, in the decision, identify the waiver requirements, explain the reason for the waiver, and state that the waiver may be challenged on appeal and may be denied by subsequent review authority. Matters ordered to the planning commission for initial review, the information required by this progress shall be included in the staff report. Two, the community development director may require information in addition to that required by specific provision of this section upon determination, the information is needed to evaluate the application properly and the need can be justified on basis of special unforeseen circumstance, additional information required, the community development, development director shall, in the decision, explain the reasons for requiring additional information. K, if the applicant has not already done, and so is some other part of the line of view process, applicant shall submit erosion control plan that complies with applicable requirements, chapter seventeen point seven four of the code. Those are the amendments. Not the, not the rain on the parade. There's one more section.
Well, before, well.
Do you, would you like us to bring it back or should we read it in?
I think we need to do it now. Um, um, I can just, while you're resting your voice and taking a drink of water. Um, in the old days, before the state changed the law, Mr. Kabazman would have had to have read every word of the entire document. Oh, so, thank you for, um.
Now, we just, affected section. We just have the section smaller.
Yeah, right, exactly.
It's in the longest section. Uh, it's the, uh, the, the required semitals, so is it? Two pages.
Well, no, um. Yeah, I think we should go ahead and go ahead and do that. You know, we can pass, I mean, this is way, this is, this is extremely important. It's, it worked on so long, it should be the culmination of the body of work.
You can go down.
Cause we still have the question.
In the middle of the district. Sure.
How did you know that?
I don't know what.
Oh, well, my question is, um, the refer, and I'm trying to find the reference from where, um, about inventory forms. There was a reference in your reading, um, about inventory forms, and I'm trying to find it.
Oh, four oh. Last one you just read.
No.
I build a reading machine for.
Why do we start reading and then you guys search for that?
Sorry. Seventeen point four oh, notices of exterior alterations in new constructions. A, accept as provided pursuant to subsection one of the section, no person shall alter any historic site in such manner as to affect its exterior appearance, nor shall there be any new construction in historic district conservation district, historic corridor, or in a landmark site unless certificate of appropriateness has previously been issued by the historic view board, any building in addition that is thirty percent or more in, in area of the historic building. The individual community shall be considered new construction in the district, further, no major and public improvements shall be made in the district unless approved by the board and given certificate appropriateness. Application for such certificate shall be made to the climbing staff, shall be referred to the historic view board, the application shall be in such form and details board describes, the archaeological monitoring recommendation for all projects that will involve ground services applicant shall provide. One, a letter or email from the Oregon State Historic Preservation through Archaeological Division, indicating the level of recommended arch, geological monitoring onsite or demonstrate that applicant has notified the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office and the Oregon State Historic Preservation Office has not commented within forty-five days notification by the applicant. And two, a letter or email from the applicable tribal cultural resource representative. Uh, from the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ron, Confederate tribes of the Celest, Confederate tribes of the Unitilla, Confederate tribes of the Warm Springs, Confederate tribes of the Yakima Nation. Um, indicating the level of recommended archaeological monitoring onsite or demonstrate that applicant has notified the applicable tribal cultural resource representative and the applicable tribal cultural resource representative has not commented within forty-five days notification by the applicant. If after forty-five days notice from the applicant, the Oregon State Historic Preservation Officer, the applicable tribal cultural resource representative will provide comment. City will not require the letter or email as part of the completeness review for the purposes of this section, ground services defined as a movement of native soils. B, the historic view board, after notice and public hearing held pursuant to chapter seventeen fifty, shall approve the issuance, approve the issuance with conditions, approve the issuance as certificate appropriateness. Two, the following exterior alterations to historic site may be subject to administrative approval. A, work that conforms to adopted, uh, historic view board policies. E, curciera alterations to historic sites in historic district or conservation district, or in the landmark criteria, the criteria to be used by the board in decision on certificate appropriateness. Uh, shall be, one, the purpose of the historic overlay district set forth in section seventeen point four oh point oh one oh two, the provision of the city's comprehensive plan. Three, the economic use of the historic site and reasonableness of the proposed alteration, the relationship to the public interest in the structure of landmarks, preservation, or renovation. Four, the value and significance of the historic site. Five, the physical condition of the historic, historic site. Six, the general compatibility of exterior design arrangement proportion, detail, scale, color, texture, and material proposed be used with historic site. Seven, pertinent aesthetic factors designated by the board. Eight, economic, social, environmental, and energy consequences. And nine, design guidelines pro, uh, adopted by the historic review board. F, for construction of new structures in an historic and conservation district or an historic site, criteria to be used by the board nation, this decision on certificate appropriateness shall include the following. One, the purpose of the historic conservation district set forth in, in section seventeen forty point oh one oh. Two, the provision of the city comprehensive plan. Three, the economic effect of the new proposed structure on the historic value of the district or historic site. Or the effect of the proposed new structure on the historic value of the district or historic site. Five, the general compatibility, the exterior design arrangement proportion, detail, scale, color, texture, and materials proposed be used in the construction of the new building and structure. Six, economic, social, environmental, and energy consequences. Seven, design guidelines adopted by the historic view board. G, construction of new structures in historic order, criteria to be used by the board and region, this decision on certificate appropriateness shall include the following. One, the purpose of the historic overlay district set forth in, in section seventeen forty oh one oh. Two, the policy of the city comprehensive plan. Three, the impact on visible evidence of the trail. Four, the impact on archaeological evidence where there exists documented knowledge of archaeological resources on the property. Five, the visual impact of new construction within the historic corridor. And six, the general compatibility of the site design and location of a new construction with historic corridor, considering the standards of subsections due to section eight. Following standards applied to development within historic corridors, one, within the Oregon Trail Barlow Road historic corridor, a minimum of thirty-foot wide open visual corridor shall be maintained, shall follow the actual route of the Oregon Trail if known. The actual route is unknown, the open visual corridor shall connect within the open visual corridor and adjacent property. Two, no new buildings or sign constructed shall be permitted within required open visual corridors, landscaping, parking, streets, driveways are permitted within required open visual corridors. I, and rendered decision, board, uh, the board's decision shall be in writing, shall specify in detail the basis of that four J, nothing in this section shall contribute prevent, order, and name, insert, repair of any exterior architectural features which does not involve change in design, material, outward appearance of such feature, which building officials shall certify is required for the public safety because of its unsafe or dangerous condition. K, the following exterior alterations may be made subject to administrative procedures outlined below. Construction fences on historic site. Historic sites exterior alterations excluding additions to incompatible structures in the Canema Historic District. One, a notice of the proposed certi, certificate of appropriateness shall be mailed to the following persons. A, the applicant. B, all owners of property within three hundred feet of the property which is listed at application. C, recognized neighborhood association and citizen involvement committee represented by the neighborhood involved. If the property which is the subject of the application lies solely or partially within the boundaries of such organization. Two, the failure of the property owner to receive such notice shall not invalidate the action. If a good faith attempt was made to notify all persons entitled per, personal notice. Three, notice shall also be given by publication in newspaper, general circulation, the area affected. Four, within ten days of the issuance of notice of the proposed certificate of appropriateness, any person who has received personal notice pursuant to subdivision one of the subsection or demonstrates sufficient interest in the outcome to participate in such proceedings is determined by the historic view board, may request a public hearing before the historic review board. Five, within forty-five days after request, public hearing is made, a public hearing shall be held before the historic review board, following procedures established in chapter seventeen fifty. Six, historic view board shall then deny or approve the application either with or without conditions, following procedures established in chapter seventeen fifty. Seven, in the event no request for hearing is filed, the historic view board, group's chairperson, and planning staff shall issue certificate appropriateness in accordance with the notice inferred without further hearing. Eight, the board may adopt policies for review of applications of certificate appropriateness in historic overlay districts set policies only, adopted only after notice and opportunity to be heard is provided. Shall include specific opportunity for comment by the climbing staff, the climbing commission, and the city commission, such policies shall carry out the city's comprehensive plan. Set to those elements related to historic preservation, in the absence of such policies, the board shall apply such elements directly. That's the changes, each section, um, that the changes were located in.
Okay, that's summer. Okay, thank you very much, Bill. That's, uh, amazing work that you're able to do. Um, we have the motion, and we have the reading, and please let you just get your questions.
No, no, uh, let me just ask the question where it's, uh.
Okay, well.
I can read it to you.
Okay.
Are the plans required under site plan and design review?
H.
H, page number one nineteen, so it'd be the top one. It's in, it's, it's kind of a stock language throughout. And it's number seventeen sixty-two oh four oh eight. Six, the location of inventory historical, historic or cultural resource down within a hundred feet of the boundaries of the site. It may have been what you heard, I believe.
Oh, that was the specific word, uh, inventory. Um, well, other than.
On page, on page sixteen, it's sixteen oh eight oh two five, it'd be page twenty-three under our subdivision, required plan, number seven.
Well, let me say what my concern is, and, um, my concern is that the inventory forms aren't accurate. And, and so, um, I, I, the more I look at the inventory forms, the more concerned I am about them. And, um, I brought this up with Erma Care House and Public Works Building and other things too, and, and we talked about historic inventory forms. Um, so, you know, I don't know how it affects this, but my question at some point needs to be answered, which is, we did an inventory in nineteen eighty-three. There was new inventory done in, in two thousand nine. My assumption is that the two thousand nine inventory forms are the, the legal document that we, we utilize. And we're talking about inventory forms. I don't know if that's true, I'm just making that assumption, is that true?
Do we use?
SHPO asks to look at inventory forms for accurate information about our inventory, they're using the updated forms.
Use the updated forms, yes.
My problem is, is if you look at the nineteen eighty-three inventory forms for almost every building in this city. They have extremely detailed histories of those buildings. When you look at the two thousand nine inventory forms, they're not there. The history's gone. Um, and, and I have huge concerns about that because if we're relying on two thousand nine inventory forms, there's nothing there. Um, and, and it was, so I, I, I have huge concerns about that. Um, most of the houses that predate nineteen twenty in Oregon City are labeled as, you know, when they're built on the old inventory forms, nineteen thirteen, nineteen twelve, nineteen, whatever. But when you look at the two thousand nine inventory forms, all houses that are predated nineteen twenties are listed on the new inventories as built as nineteen twenties. Like they were rounded up. Um, the only ones that I found that actually carried the history over from the nineteen eighty-three forms to the two thousand nine forms are houses like the Magloffon House, or the Erma Care House, or houses that you couldn't by any means not transfer that history over because they're, you know, designated national um, as, or structures. So I guess I need to know that if the two thousand nine forms are the ones that we're relying on, then how we make sure that they're fixed because they're not accurate.
Um, I will have to look into that and bring that back.
If we're, I mean, if we're, we're keep passing things that refer to inventory forms and our inventory forms are not accurate, then that costs a huge amount of problems. And I don't know that I can vote on it just with that because that, I mean, I'm talking about eighty percent of the forms I look at had no history that carried over from the old forms to the new forms. It really worries me.
Could we flag that, um, to come back to? Because it's a whole category of discussion that sounds fine.
Yeah, and, and appreciate some time to be able to look into it and, and try and understand what the, how wide.
On the city website.
How wide's the recommendation is.
All of those are there.
And what was done when consultants updated in two thousand nine and how the previous inventories apply.
Maybe get back to some of that, um, because any adoption actually is not permanent, we can change it as, as, as necessary. Pusher West.
All right, I was just gonna ask, did, didn't we have a consultant do that? Or you're just saying?
Yes, we had a consultant.
Who is consultant?
I'm, I'm gonna have to give, I don't have that information.
We'll find out that when we double it, we know this is gonna be another time. Okay, I have a question, sort of about the code amendments. All right, we have a motion on the floor, um, no discussions, Nancy, the votes case. I.
President.
I. I, motion passes four zero. Aye, motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much.
I guess we'd just like to say, because it's, it's such a momentous body work that it actually, our goal for which increases the livability for our community, that's what, that's what we did. Um, and in almost every, every instance, we address natural resources, behave our standards, uh, compatible with our landscape, um, with the wants and desires of citizens and residents. So, um, I, we actually, all of us, again, on this work and the immense amount of time that you and the public and the community have contributed to this work, so thank you again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And with that, um, let's take a break until you come back at eight twenty. Okay.
His retirement from Oregon City and I just, uh, wanna welcome him to his, probably his last commission meeting. He's been with the city, I think, for over ten years. And so I've only been able to work with him in a very short time, but I just wanted to acknowledge your service to the community. Thank you.
Chris Spurven has, um, acting, taking the building department's state recognition. He's been head for, um, own professional organization which is called.
Oregon Building Officials Association.
And so, um, you've really made a name for yourself as Oregon City. And I hear, um, many compliments about our building department, uh, whose work, so thank you.
Well, thank you, uh, Mayor, um, and, uh.
And teachers at, uh, Department of Energy.
Thank you. I'm Adam Mayor and Commissioners. Um, this is kind of a, a housekeeping issue, trying to get some things taken care of before I, uh, leave in fourteen days, but I'm not counting. Periodically, the state building code is, is amended and updated. And, uh, while we try to, uh, maintain our city ordinance so that it's, it's pretty generic in nature and that we don't adopt specific additions. There are sometimes revisions to the code, uh, that are either taken out and deleted or they're actually adopted into the code. Uh, that's kind of the case here. Uh, this is really not much more than housekeeping provisions as far as the building code provisions go. Uh, the appendixes were actually deleted and are no longer in the code because they were incorporated into the code. Uh, a little bit farther down is, is an issue in regards to, uh, the manufactured dwelling code. It was completely written, uh, rewritten and, uh, what has been, um, approached serious the fact that we will just modify our code to keep up with state adopted codes, so. Be happy to answer any questions, uh.
Thank you. I feel we do this periodically. As we need to rise, sorry, may I have a motion for, um, approval of these changes?
Is, uh, ordinance, so it'd be the first reading of ordinance.
Right. Don't all speak at once.
Okay, um, I'll move a favorable, uh, for ordinance or for the first reading for ordinance number ten dash one thousand five, amending the building and construction standards in section fifteen point oh four point oh one oh of the Oregon City Minus Code.
Second, moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Smith, is their discussion. Nancy, Nancy, the vote please.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, we didn't have the reading, sorry.
All right, just, just want to want to do more.
Our city attorney.
Ordinance number ten dash one zero zero five, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City with Title fifteen buildings instruction, chapter fifteen point four, building code section fifteen point oh four, uh, oh one oh, adopted of the Oregon City Minus Code of nineteen ninety-one, enacting a new Title fifteen building instruction, chapter fifteen point oh four, building code section fifteen point oh four point oh one oh.
You sure got a easy on that one. Now, vote please.
Ms. Nacida.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Thank you, Mrs. Spurven.
And Madam Mayor, and, um, uh, I, I'd request just a couple minutes to respond. Um, to me, Commissioner Nacida requested some information about the use of potable and non-potable water and rain gardens and whatnot off of residential and commercial roofs. And, um, we did some research on that and we do allow that. Um, it's allowed by state statute and as long as we're compliant with the state statute, we do allow it in Oregon City. But since we had Mr. Spurven here tonight, if you had any other questions, um, we have to answer those for you.
If it's allowed by state statute, do we need further local authorities to allow that? Is it just enabling legislation or do we have to do something for?
Somewhat of a complex issue in, in that, that all plumbing issues are regulated by the plumbing code. And, uh, because green building and water conservation is, is certainly at the forefront of, of, of our society, the state plumbing board, um, adopted in two thousand eight. A couple of ordinances, one of them dealing with residential, uh, reclamation of, of rain drains for both potable and non-potable usage and, uh, would like to clarify that, that, that the state plumbing code defines potable and non-potable, whether they're gray water, black water or, or clean water. So, um, potable water is for consumption. Um, non-potable water is, is not for consumption or not to be used for consumption. So, uh, statewide alternate ruling, I think it's oh eight oh one, uh, deals with rain drain reclamation off of roofs only. And that can be used through a treatment facility, um, as potable and non-potable water. Some time later in two thousand eight, they made another alternate method, um, that would allow you to do the same thing with commercials. So it's, it's, the alternate method in ruling, well, it's not in the code. The plumbing board did not want to put it in the plumbing code, but it, an alternate method and material is an, is an approved and discussed through whatever state board, whether it be through the plumbing board or the building board, depending upon which specialty it's in, that is to provide some guidance for the local jurisdictions should someone want to use rainwater harvesting. Uh, while it is not long, it's not in the plumbing code. It is an accepted method that has gone through the state plumbing board and has received their blessing. So if somebody wants to reclaim Jim Wateroff, if you want to reclaim water off of your roof in your residence, in your house, and you want to incorporate that into potable and non-potable systems, you, you have the criteria under the alter, under the alternate method. However, it does still require approval from the building official or the authority heading.
And you can base your approval based on the state.
Based upon that. That's the intent of that statewide alternate method is that I have some criteria or whoever the code official is, is, is going to approve that. And that's, that's applicable for residential and, um, commercial. And I, I do want to clarify though that if the water, rain drain or water reclamation is only for irrigation and landscaping purposes, it's an outright permitted use. It's a no alternate method is required. You can just do that, what if you want to put rain barrels up, you can do that. Nothing, no approval is necessary.
Since I already did.
Me, me too. So, um, any further?
Any other questions or questions of Mr. Spurven, I was here.
Mayor Norris, I just wanted to say that, uh, I've had the privilege of working around you for eight years and it's been a joy.
Next on the agenda is the intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement, the IGA with Blackman County for those welcome funds from, uh, the Public Library District that are coming, the Orange's left district is Blackman County. Uh, the million dollars for capital improvements, so.
Um, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, um, tonight I'm bringing for you, um, a little bit of undone business. This is kind of part two of the, um, district formation and the agreement with the county. And this is the part in which they promised to give us one million dollars for capital improvements. Um, and now we have a project that we're working on and, uh, our money would be coming to us according to the, um, distribution fund starting in January of two thousand and eleven. It's time to, um, enter into this agreement so that we can pursue receiving it at the appropriate time.
I thought that's the important part of your, um, staff report was also that this does not preclude us from asking for additional funds, which we were hope, hoped at the beginning of the gap of this process that we might get.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Commissioner Smith.
Let me make sure, I, I just want to make sure I can vote on this. This is, this is it for remodeling once the building is, this is not for part of the purchase of a building or anything, right? This is.
This is to use, that's how we're gonna use this. The, the money, yeah, well, this money is, um, to be used, as we decide that it must be used for capital improvements. And so.
I think the determination on whether I vote on this is if it, if we purchase the building and this money is being used for renovations, then I can probably vote on it. If this has anything to do with buying the building, then I cannot be a part of it.
And I'd, I'd add just a little tweak on that. Uh, you're prohibited from voting on something that, that will be to the financial benefit or detriment of the school district or employer. Uh, but you can declare the potential con, that's natural conflict. This strikes me as more of a potential conflict where it could be to the, uh, financial benefit or detriment of your employer, which means that you can declare your potential conflict and participate in the vote.
So declare it.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or, um, or library director? All right, then how about the motion to, um, enter into the formal review? Don't all speak at once?
I guess, uh, the questions only come from the left-hand side.
I believe that you are the designated motion maker.
Go for it. I can handle it. Okay, I move to approve the IGA with Blackman County for the disbursement of a million dollars of funds for capital improvements to our new Oregon City Library.
Second, moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Nacida. A further comment? Nancy, the vote please.
Ms. Nacida.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes four zero. We have a consulting contract to consider, um, for information technology consulting with Case Space Network Consulting. I bet our IT guy didn't know he's gonna have this.
This little, um, phone signal, and I don't know if it's city, but I have an employee. Uh, thank you for, uh, giving the opportunity to read for you tonight. Uh, this is a, uh, recommendation to, uh, extend the contract for existing IT consulting case space. Uh, they've been, uh, working, uh, with us since two thousand and three under three, uh, previous extensions of their contract. Uh, and this one expires at the end of this month and we're requesting a free, free extension, um, with, uh, ninety-nine hundred dollar a month, uh, flat rate. There are, um, clauses in the contract that, um, enable the flat fee and, uh, if there are additional fees beyond that, uh, that we will be alerted and have to agree to those ahead of time. That so far has not happened, uh, so far in our relationship with Case Space. Uh, they've done excellent service for us and, um, I would recommend that we continue on for, uh, uh, an extension of their existing contract.
Um, I assume that you're bringing this to us because you're pleased with their work and that if you weren't, that there are others in the field who could do it?
Yes, yes. Uh, Case Space is, um, actively involved with a number of, uh, complicated projects that we've, uh, ramped up over the last year especially, uh, with the fiber optic cable and, uh, voice over IP systems, wireless activity. Uh, and, uh, they've been very good with, uh, with moving these projects forward. So, uh, we're most comfortable with, uh, um, continuing that role right now.
Other questions? And I may have a motion please for, uh, accepting of this contract. Our, call on our designated motion maker, Commissioner West.
Once again. Um, I move approval for, um, a three-year PSA or personal service agreement for IT consulting services with Case Space Network Consulting.
All second, and I actually have made several motions tonight.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna have to step out, uh, step out of the analysis.
Uh, moved by Commissioner West and second by Commissioner Smith. Is there further comment? Thank you. Nancy, the vote please.
Commissioner Nacida. Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye, motion passes four zero. And, oh yes, Commissioner West.
Uh, I'll just say, uh, thanks, uh, uh, thanks so much to, uh, David Knoll for, um, our website with our consultant because I think our website's absolutely fabulous. And in four years on city council, this is one of the areas that I believe has grown the most and is the biggest progress. It's just unreal that changes you've done, so.
And to us, Oregon City, overall.
Uh, it, it is also interesting when we established our sister city relationship with, with Maui, the island of Maui. You know, it's, it's huge. They're developed. They have a tourism department. They have development directors. The only thing that we could find that we had better than they did, that they envy, was our website. And so I was very, very proud of that at that time. Let's keep it that way. Yes, I bet. Thank you. All right, moving right along to the reason that, uh, um, Jim Bam, what's your title? Lieutenant Jim Bam has been waiting for all evening is, uh, because he might present the emergency tolling service bid proposal for the next five years. Lieutenant Bam.
So we have a, uh, there was only one bid proposal, uh, and that is by Buzz Stone, uh, who is, uh, the business is in Oregon City. We have, uh, done business with them for about twenty years, uh, under similar, physically the same contract. Uh, very happy. They've done a fantastic job. And like I said, they're the only, uh, the only person to submit a bid to us. So we would, uh, recommend that, uh, bid, I guess, be, uh, accepted and that they are our, uh, emergency tow, uh, contractor for the next five years.
So I assume that even though they're the only bidder, that you're happy with their services? And that's probably the most important.
Yes, they've done a great job.
I move to approve these. Service is bad proposal submitted by Buzz Stone incorporated on period of July first, two thousand ten through June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, second by Lieutenant Nacida. Totally shutting out, Commissioner West. Uh, this good proposal, um, is there a comment on this? Thank you, Nancy, oh, yeah.
Oh, I do have a comment. Well, it looks like that you, it's not a lump sum per year. It's all per tow, uh, for, for use of service, the contract.
Yes, and, and it's not even money that, that they're paying to us. There's a certain criteria for what they have to pay, uh, actually the, the people. Their customers are the people who we call toes for. They're the ones who exchange money with them, not us.
Thank you. Now the vote please.
Commissioner Nacida.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Next, we have a report from the ended Oregon Trail site where work has been happening to, um, preserve and develop the visitor's center. So call in Scott Archer, Community Services Director.
Major Mayor Norris and City Commissioner, as, as you know, we've been in conversations, uh, regarding the potential for the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce to occupy the building that is, is the visitor information center. There are really two, two concurrent discussions that are occurring. Just to, to remind you, give you a little bit of quick background then. That is, um, the, um, the discussion about the, the potential for the Chamber of Commerce to actually lease and, and use that building as their, basically as their home site, as their, as their office site. And then the concurrent conversation is that the county, uh, Blackman County would then work with them to negotiate an agreement by which they would be the operator of the visitor information center. Um, as you know, the, um, Blackman County Partners have been doing that under a contract for, uh, for the last, uh, little while while this issue that, you know, since we've kind of closed the interpretive center and with all the transition there, the, uh, CHP organization set it up and, and took that and basically acted as the fiscal agent. Um, but that is all, uh, that arrangement is all ending as of June thirtieth. So, um, uh, the, things are moving rather quickly on this, um, visitor centerpiece. And so there are a few things that we needed to bring to you this evening for, uh, discussion and, and actually to seek your direction. The, uh, the, the biggest, the biggest issue that we're, uh, approaching about is, is the, regarding the memo that you should have all received from Attorney Bill Comisman regarding the charter park issue that was. regarding the charter park issue that was that was raised at some point um recently. So the essentially um the charter says that uh in so many words that we cannot lease parked property or parked buildings. Um there's some interpretation. Mr. Comysman's memo spells that out in in great detail. I won't, I won't, I won't go back through that. Um if Mr. Comysman wishes to add anything to what I'm saying, uh I would ask him to do so. The uh the outcome or the basically where we're at tonight is that um if the um if the discussion is to continue in terms of uh making an arrangement or negotiating something with the chamber for them to to be in that building, um it appears based on Mr. Comysman's uh interpretation that we've got probably three or so options, and that is one based on the charter's provision, uh the, and it allows for the commission to interpret that and to allow you to still lease the property if you choose to do so based on your own interpretation. Am I not saying that correctly? This is where I want the interpreting.
Yeah, my my thought, and I would say that without a vote of the people, you cannot lease Kelly Park property. There are arrangements that can be made that are short of leases where uh the the owner, uh the the chamber or somebody else may have the the ability to run it. You know, the example is that what the city entered into with CFP was a management agreement where they managed the facility but did not uh obtain any property rights. So there are structures that that we can enter into with the the chamber. We just need to be careful about how we do it if if we're gonna if we're gonna do it. Um so that's the 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 key, I think, takeaway is if in fact you want to pursue the course of having the chamber in there, then um uh what we can just work on some structures that will will do it in a way that that um eats the city needs. I guess what we want is in direction what what we we want out of housing the chamber at the visitor's center. In fact, that's where the commission wants to go.
So I think the main difference from what we have been previously discussing is is that in essence, under that scenario, we wouldn't be charging, we wouldn't be uh charging as a landlord or charge a tenant. They wouldn't, they wouldn't pay us a monthly grant or or some type of however, as I understand it, through this agreement, we may be able to re receive some reimbursement for utilities and and things that are, you know, those types of
there are ways to to get uh to do a compensation. It's just be careful with structure of a lease.
So we do have the option of 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 working towards some type of arrangement like that. Um of course, we have the option if you would choose to do so, which is not the recommendation with uh to discontinue this negotiation and these conversations. The the other piece of this is is it's June sixteenth as of June thirtieth, we don't have an operator for the visitor's information center, which is it's our building, but the county operates, as as I think you're aware of how that arrangement works. I think both the city and the county wish to continue with with the seamless operation and are not and not have a discontinuation of that service, even though we're in the process of of also discussing this arrangement with the chamber for them to be housed at the site potentially. In in that, in that light, uh the county has, the tourism divi- um division of the county has come up with a potential um short-term arrangement for another vendor that will be willing to act as the agent to run the visitor information piece for a short-term period while we still work towards. If the commission wishes to proceed uh and continue with discussions with the chamber, there is a, there is a contingency plan that will continue the operations of 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 the information center piece. And it's with, it is not with Clackamas Service Partners. It's with a separate agent um altogether.
This is for the period beyond June thirty?
Uh yes, so it would be July first until whatever the short-term period is. The the discussion has been something like around ninety days. That's, I think there's some flexibility to discuss that, but that's just based on making sure that we have enough time to um work out this arrangement and and also, I think, I I won't speak for the chamber, Amber Pollock is here. They have, I think, some of their own issues and concerns and things that they need to work through. So there have been no agreements made at this point, just to just to be clear. So the question is to to you, uh commission, is would you wish us to continue with this news from um Mr. Comysman on the charter issue? Would you wish us to continue discussing this arrangement with the Chamber of Commerce, or do you have other direction for this?
Okay, so we're just quick discussion now. Uh beginning with Commissioner Nizita.
Okay, um first question I have, um and I'd probably put this to Commissioner Smith um um right off the bat is what um and and the process that's um occurring right now with the consulting for the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, what's the timeline on that? And I mean, if that, the use of that property is obviously front and center in that whole consult consultation process. And I'm just wondering, do you have a sense of when that, what is the timeframe on getting a a resolution through the consultation process and then actually implementing whatever comes as a result of uh of that process?
Let's actually direct that to staff who's been working with consulting, and you're probably closer than we are.
I anticipate um a midpoint report coming to us soon. We have a June twenty-third task force. That will be the second one that will occur in July. We should be getting the interim report. It is planned that they will come and present to the commission at first meeting in September and make their recommendation.
First of September?
The first meeting in September, that's correct.
And I guess um this charter provision probably plays into that whole consultation process. It just places a limit on what the potential uses.
Absolutely. The consultants are aware of it. It has been discussed in the interviews as well as the consulting.
Okay, um here's here's the issue I have with this. Um and it's kind of um I'm reminded of the urban renewal discussion that we engaged in this afternoon regarding um the consultation uh contact um and whether um what was the intent of the people who kept Blue Heron out of the urban renewal district and was accused of being mid-pity and too focused on trees for the forest, et cetera.
We're not letting one of that happen.
I know. Um but um I kind of see this charter provision as pretty straightforward. I mean, the the people of the city have a fairly straightforward intent that these charter park properties not be leased out without a vote of the people. And I don't even see in the commission report um on these options, there's references A, B, and C. Um and the actual taking of this to the vote of the people uh isn't even included in that. Um and I know timelines on on a vote, you know, November, et cetera, um is a little far in the future, especially early timeline that the county's on. I mean, you know, the um um the uh chamber is on. But I wanna um keep as close as I can to expecting what I see as a pretty straightforward um intent of the voters when they pass that charter park provision and not engage in um creative uh interpretations of the charter um to get around what seems to be a fairly straightforward intent of the voters when they pass that charter park provision. So um with that um in mind, I don't um do go to what Mr. Archer stated as his request as far as the direction. Um I would not be in favor of leasing this um or engaging anything that looks like a lease, you know, with some of the clothing on or some other um uh creative um interpretation and just move forward to the contingency that Mr. Archer outlined um as the ultimate.
What do you think is a little greater for you?
Sure.
Head then. Um when the uh you did have a vote of citizens to build the visitor center. So it's to me, that was an affirmation that the citizens of Oregon City wanted to have visitor information center there. That was what the purpose of the vote was. And um so I see that as a little gray in that 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 this is this is essentially a support stack to the visitor's center. So I think that grays it up a little bit because it's one facility doing one function. And um uh I wasn't gonna do my other arguments because I wanna get off to the other speaker, but since I guess I have the microphone here. Um the the other thing that I that I like about it is that rather than being uh counting on it, we've had multiple suspensions among the five of us of trying to bring the visitor's center since now we own the property with more of an Oregon City focus. And so to me, um if we can get past the the charter thing, and I realize that's a little, a little, a little sticky, but then uh like again, I I because the voters voted that visitor's center to be constructed, I guess I would need to say that they intended that it it be functioning as such, so. Commissioner Smith?
Um I'm just sorry, I'm just um there's so many, so many things. Um I guess the um the the concern that I have, um well, we didn't have an agreement with the visitor's center. The agreement was with CHP. Um and so um and so the visitor's center operated under CHP. And it still is until that agreement goes away at thirtieth, right? So of course, since CHP doesn't really exist in any formal foundation form, um obviously we have to close that and end that, and that's the right thing to do. Um which then leaves the visitor's center in there with no umbrella, so um essentially, CHP and the visitor's center have been in that building with for free, free rent. Um we, the last time the chamber came to us, we had a discussion about whether we wanted to pay rent for a location, and and so um obviously that didn't move forward. And so now we're in a situation where we're gonna basically live in free rent for a building possibly. So that concerns me. Um you know, there were, there's a, the CHP, we had a management agreement with CHP, so obviously they had other things that allowed them to not having to pay, you know, for the space. I mean, they they prepared the building and all this stuff. Well, now it's in our lap. The building's in our lap. It's really our our um our problem now. And so if we are utilizing that building for other uses and there's no um help coming back to us uh because of the way that the charter is written, um and I wanna follow the charter, but it concerns me because we're gonna try to to operate the building, which we don't have the resources to. Um so the only um solution is to find someone else, but we can't charge them rent. Um we have to find someone other way. Um but in the end, we're still responsible for maintaining the building probably and all this other thing. So that really concerns me um because the and and the other option was that we hired the staff of the city, well, uh for the visitor's center. Um but I have a hard time um hiring staff, city staff that works as the county visitor's center that promotes an entire county. So and and to some degree, the chamber is not not push, is not um I mean, providing um the chambers in that building, they're serving their purpose as well, but they're not really um working for us either. It's it's a tough one, and I and I I don't, I I I don't know how to how to deal with that quite yet. My understanding in terms of the um the task force was that any agreement with the chamber or the visitor's center is only an agreement until the task force sends this work. And if the task force decides at that point that the chamber or um in the um visitor's center remains, then that's one thing, but they may not. The task force may say that there's a use of this building, it's gonna be something completely. So whatever agreement that we get even before the task force could end, as soon as the task force comes by, it's a little bit two separate things. My only concern is making sure that the visitor's center stays open through the summer. Um and I'm not really sure how to do that. So I don't think I I, you know, I won't support um, you know, I don't support changing this charter. I'm kind of in a gray area where I, you know, don't necessarily wanna create some some scenario that's that looks like they're not leasing the building and that they're um so if, does anyone else have any great path solution?
And Scott would certify one thing. Um the county, uh under the scenario where the chamber might move in, the county would have an arrangement with the chamber, but we would also have a management agreement. We would have some kind of document because they would be occupying our facility.
That's correct.
So it wouldn't necessarily change, but you just take these issues, play, there would be a new agreement between.
Have to have an agreement, and the county would have to have an agreement with the chamber. Two, two distinct agreements, one, one by where we're basically allowing them to be in the building. And the and the second would be the county's arrangement with with whoever, it be at the chamber or whomever, to be the operator of the visitor's center.
And then I heard our attorney say that um it's likely that we could um under some kind of a management agreement that we could ask the chamber to pay for utilities and maybe maintenance and some other um non-directly reimbursable assistance.
Right, I I mean, you know, I think the management agreement that the the city are into with OTF originally and CHP is is, you know, a classic example of the kind of arrangement that the city can have allowing somebody in there that's not really a lease. They're they're, you know, um and and we can look at that and, you know, uh deal with some of the issues involving utilities and other things through through an agreement like that. So um I I I think that's that's doable.
Commissioner West? Okay, now let me see if I have this right. On June thirtieth, um CHP has to leave, which leaves the tourism center, tour uh the county tourism office in the building of the ERTIC alone. And that's not a good thing to have them in there with one employee. It's just not a safe situation. They're not willing to do it. Okay, uh two, we have a task force that's trying to decide a long-term use of it that uh with the 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 earliest of an agreement we'll see is in September.
There's no report.
There's no report, so um and and then third, we're we're trying to decide if it would be a smart move to, I I okay, for one, don't have a problem with the management agreement and uh with the tourism or with the chamber going in there technically or legally, but I think that's fine. But but what could happen is I'm seeing is if you put it in there, June thirtieth, you have to keep your tourism going, but then what happens with the task force? And so I'm a little bit worried about the cart before the horse because didn't we just do this on something else? Yeah, uh. So I hate to lose the tourism center. I'd love to help the chamber. I think it's a great spot for the chamber. It gives them more parking, more visibility. The chamber helps us. The chamber is a, it's like a kind of a free economic development, um well, not free, but a economic development uh key piece in our community.
Scott? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm done. I don't know. I don't know where to go either.
I think just just for clarification, uh two things. One, just to be sure, we're only talking about the building that that is the visitor information center, not any other part of EOCIC.
Okay, the two other buildings would have three other buildings.
Uh there's several other buildings, yeah. There's, we're, for for what we're talking about right now is just the visitor information center building. And then second, I wanted to be clear, uh Commissioner West, you said something about after this contract with CHP expires and they leave, there's an employee still there or something?
Although on June thirtieth, the tourism center's tourism will still be there.
Yes, yes.
The visitor's center will, sorry, the visitor's center will still be there.
Well, the the CH, to be clear, CHP is 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 contracted with Clackamas County right now to do the visitor's information centerpiece.
But you said the county was gonna.
As of June thirtieth, so effective July one, actually, nobody is supposed to be there at this point unless we have an arrangement.
The county is has uh they they have their interest. They wanna keep it there, and their committed to go through another party.
Through another party. That's the key. I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that I made.
That they do another party, another escalation or whatever. Um. I'm open to more discussion.
Commissioner Smith?
So what organization does the county have in mind?
I don't know.
It's, if we work, when we did our
The chamber.
No, we did our tourism actually plan. Wendy Cockton is a consultant. She helped us with our No, we did our tourism action plan, Wendy Cockton is a consultant, she helped us with our tourism action plan. Wendy does all the, um, grants for our, um, our tourism council, our tourism action plan, et cetera. And she has her own nonprofit, it's her business, and so I believe they're going to use Wendy. I think she has a consultant name, but I don't know what it is.
Well, it's our decision, it's our building.
But no, it's their, it's, that's their operation.
Well, right, but we're determined where they stay in our building.
It, right, correct, but I think that's who they have, have lined up.
That's the name that I've heard, I just wasn't familiar with who that was, I just know that that person could act for them as a contractor according to, according to the county.
My, that's what my point is, is that if, if our agreement, you know, we get to say who's in that building and it, and so why is the county going out finding their own group to partner with? That's our job, you know, and if we don't wanna use, if the chamber, if we of the city don't feel the chamber is the right partnership, then it's our determination to find out what that other partnership is, or the county can leave. I mean, there's, there's, it's our, it's our agreement with whatever, um, entity replaces CHP.
Can I respond to that? Yeah, cuz I think I'll clear that up, that the county realizes that, this is just a contingency plan, we're within two weeks of something happening and and if everybody's not prepared, uh, they're waiting for, they're waiting for direction tonight as well from you as our, as our staff.
Well, I think if you don't make the decision, they're, they're out July first.
Of July first, there is no visitor's information center operation, if there's no direction.
And I, and I think that would be shame, I think Oregon City would lose if, if that would happen, so, for, for me, the number one thing, the visitor center open. And then, um, number, number two, I, I, let's see, let's see for themselves, but, um, we're all talking about the fact that on Septem- the group meeting, September, we'll have a consultant's report, but, you know, I've worked in the nonprofit world for thirty years and, uh, that probably has to have some dollar signs attached with it for implementation. Uh, and it, uh, you know, we normally don't make those decisions very quickly, so I'm seeing, you know, several more months down the road before we really get, get the decision made and then if there's, uh, money either to be raised privately or publicly, that'll take us a while too, so I think we're probably into the beginning of the, of the next year before we have a real being plan, uh, maybe not, and maybe we can move more quickly, but I'm seeing that to be our, our track record necessarily. Um, Commissioner West, still on?
Yeah, so, um, we take a chance, if we don't do this, I'm losing the visitor's center. Is the chamber, um, you know, what would be the minimum of time, let's say worst case scenario, that this, the consultant finds us a magic solution and a
A pot of money.
A pot of money or a big shirt to have you run that place.
You live in bed, it seems like.
Yeah. So what's the minimum amount of time that the chamber would be willing to relocate for? So maybe the, the one
Amber, would you like to?
I mean, not a lot, I don't think.
I know, I assume that's part of, I've seen that part of negotiations if we wish to make it happen, but, do you wanna respond to that? Obviously not, really.
I think one has to make a decision.
Well, I think that we need to determine what we want to do and then, then we ask the staff to make it work. And so, um, I, I don't know that we, that we can present the choices to the chamber necessarily, because we have to determine, do we want that partnership to, to go?
It's, I think so, I do want you to talk.
If we'd love to do that. Amber, call, call that CEO of the chamber.
Hello, David?
No, 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 just fine.
Okay, thank you. A, a few key pieces, as, as you, you know, you'll probably need in work session and, and mull over this and learn more in the process. I would like first to go on record is to say that the city did contact the chamber for this, to serve this role, in whatever capacity that might be, so we did not come to the city with this request, okay? Um, it was explained that this could be a service, it would add some security, having more people there. Um, we already in tandem do a lot of tourism development right here in town for no compensation. Our business members, um, you could say that our business members who operate restaurants or hotels or what have you, they're paying membership fees for us to promote tourism, but the promotion of tourism in Oregon City by the chamber for free is happening every single day. And so I would like folks to remember that as well. And then as you have your discussions, also understand that you could really fill in any nonprofit organization in the discussions of the organization would manage or operate or what have you. So I would just appreciate as your discussions proceed, that you keep a few of those pieces in mind. Um, this is not a light decision to make and it's certainly not by our chamber board, they are very, um, they want to approach this very cautiously because there are a lot of different parties involved. And, um, a lot of unknowns with regard to the, uh, the task force and so it, we're not really excited about learning from the task force early September, what their thoughts might be. And then having an expectation from the county that October first is, is when they would like to be able to roll with the new, um, management, um, body, um, working with the visitor information center, so there's a lot of unknowns and it's gonna take a lot of brain power cooperation and discussion in order to come up with the best decision. So that's all I really feel like I can share tonight.
Thank you, thank you, that's. Commissioner Nacita?
I'm open to them, I don't know if I'll have an answer.
It just seems to me that this, this setup kind of creates a lot of uncertainty for the chamber
Huge.
Because if you go in there at the beginning of July and the task force comes up with some plan, that just, you, I mean, as soon as you get settled in where you're
We would not move until July first. There's no, I don't, you could offer the moon, maybe, but, um, I don't see that as realistic by any means. And I, I, I would say that, um, even over the summer, I mean, we would have to wait until the task force came back with anything, um, before we would be able to move or consider a move.
And then potentially only months later, you'd have to move again. Potentially.
Potentially.
Okay. Commissioner West?
So is the issue at hand then, okay, so they're not moving till September, at, at minimum, minimum, or the earliest, how we keep the visitor's center in, uh, in Oregon City or down there until we can sounds like with the nonprofit consultant that is able to take that role, that they can at least act as the pass through the fiscal agent for the visitor information center until that time. But you still have the continued concern of no other bodies there for security and stability. You're saying you can't be there anyway, there's just no way. I, honestly, that would be an awful lot to ask. Yeah.
Okay, that changes things for me, I thought that
Yeah.
I didn't know, I didn't know that piece, so, three months down the road.
So, um, maybe this is a Keep in mind, we do already have a landlord, we need to get know, work right by him.
Thank you, that's enlightening.
So, um, Mr. Archer, does the county have any other suggestions in, uh, what to do here?
There
To keep, I mean, I, I, I'm guessing they'd like to keep the visitor's center here in Oregon City.
They would absolutely, and that's why, thi- this is all happening, the situation has developed very quickly, you know, we've had some new information and some new things come to, come to light with what we can and can't do, but also just this whole situation anyway has been pretty fluid and fast-moving with CHP and changes and so forth, but, um, so be, as, as much as I know, in, in, uh, Terry Bankhead and I have been meeting, uh, with, with the county, um, had some conversations back and forth. There's just the one option right now, which is, which is the consultant that, that Mayor Norris already mentioned, that, um, they are prepared to enter into an agreement with, if, if there's no further or different directions.
And, and they will stay there with no other, uh, physical bodies or no other, you know, help in, in the building all summer?
So, that's correct.
They will do that.
That's what I understand, I, I can't speak for the county, they're not here, um, but that's what I understand, they've reached a at least a verbal kind of tentative agreement against to that type of direction.
And they're going to, yeah, and they're going to a seven-day operation, is that right, two, July one?
Seven, right.
Yeah.
So, let, let me just add a few bits of tidbits from what I know from the county, um, they, in their current contract that they have with CHP, it is required for summer hours that they do go to seven days a week and they extend their hours. And there have been some questions from the staff out there of how do we fulfill that requirement based on the amount of staff we have and the funding that we get? Those facts are taken into consideration between the discussions with TDC and the staff that are out there, so I, all, all the parties are aware of what is required. And it's really no different than the situation right now from not really having additional staff out there, and so when I spoke to the visitor's center manager before, she said, you know, we could fulfill those hours and those requirements if we add hours to our staffing. So I think the county is probably having those conversations with the staff out there as we speak, um, not at nine o'clock, but, um, and so, not having additional bodies there, I think that they are hoping to make up for by adding more hours onto the staffing. I can't speak specifically because that contract has not been put into place between the county and employees, but those have been some discussions that I've heard.
Now I have to recalibrate my thinking because, um, uh, okay, so essentially now what we have is we have the visitor's center essentially taken care of during the high tourism season, which gets us to September. And then in September, we have the consultant report, which may or may not have something that can be put into place immediately uh, or not, we don't know, um, and so, and then the visitor's center will go back to the five-day a week, I assume, in the off-season because it's been traditional. So, um, that does, that, that totally changes the ballgame here. Um.
And essentially, they're already there by themselves anyway.
We don't, not right, no, not right now.
They're in the CIC until the thirtieth.
I know, but they're physically no, no others.
Yes.
Right, right, there's no other staff there, it's just them there occupying those buildings, so. So ba- basically, we're kind of just asking for, the county will give us just a little bit more time till we finish up our survey.
You know, recognizing that there's a different operator, uh, that they're, they are, they would be contracting with a different operator and, um, Commissioner Beis, and I don't know, would, would that require us to have a separate agreement, you think, with that operator to allow them to be on the premises, cuz the county already, county already basically runs the VIC part of this and I don't, I don't know what to do, but they're allowed in the building through the management agreement that we have with CHP as, as essentially, um, so, I mean, to, we could, uh, if they're willing to do it, assign the, the terms of the, the, um, management agreement to the county if they're willing to take that on, my guess is that they would probably have some issues with some pieces of it, I haven't looked at it in a while, but my experience with the county is that they're, they're gonna have some, they're gonna have something, so we could essentially put in place a new management agreement based on the old management agreement or something entirely new, where they agree to manage the visitor's center and au- we authorize them into the building and, you know, take care of the some of the issues that we've talked about as well as, you know, other issues that are addressed in the management agreement.
If that consultant is not physically in that building though, would that still require? So if that consultant is a nonprofit that exists somewhere else that does not physically take space in that building, but it really is serving strictly as a fiscal agent throughout recent years.
Who, who would actually be in the building?
The building, the building are the employees.
Of the fiscal agent?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, it would still be, you know, whoever, whatever entity is, is
Okay.
Even though the, you know, i- it's like contracting with, um, I'm trying, trying to think of somebody else that, you know, it's, yeah, the fact that the, the entity is headquartered there doesn't mean that they, we can't con- contract with them to allow their employees or, uh, whoever they authorize to get into the building.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith?
I, I, I guess my problem right now is, um, I had, I attended one meeting, um, uh, with the mayor and so I, you know, where this was discussed and with the county and, and the, 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 um, idea of the chamber acting as that, uh, fiscal agent between the county and the visitor's center. Um, so that was a discussion and that is what our agenda then was. There was nothing about another organization, the county has found to, to work with anything and no one on this commission knew anything about that and I have a really hard time with the fact that we have to create, we have to go into a new management agreement. And we knew, when you were speaking about it, Scott, um, you didn't even mention what the organization was and then the mayor answered that. Um, I find it weird that we, this is the first that we've heard, so really what the county is doing is they've gone out and find, found their own um, group that were gonna have their management agreement with. That bothers me, um, you know, and, you know, with the chamber, you know, we're working with them and that would, you know, work out, so I have a really hard time with this, um, you know, this is our building, it's our management agreement. Um, and we're the ones that should, should be discussing who the, the person is and not just being given to the last minute when things are already being discussed, that's bizarre, um, so, um, and this is horrible because if we don't do something, so now we're kind of put in a position where we have to do something or the visitor's center is gonna close and, and unfortunately, that's where I'm leaning now. And I hate to say that because my whole point in, in, in even acknowledging this idea with the chamber was so that this visitor's center would remain open through the summer. That's obviously not gonna happen even if we have a management agreement with the chamber, cuz they're gonna need time to decide and they're not gonna move in there before we know what the future is. So now we basically are left with a, um, what do we have, how many weeks a week left? So we have two weeks to decide if we're okay, um, with the county handpicking, um, a consultant that we're gonna have an agreement with and we don't know anything about it until it's brought to us tonight, I really, I, so obviously we can't make a decision on this tonight and we don't have any meetings scheduled before the thirtieth, so how do we decide this? Scott, well, unless we schedule another meeting.
I understand your concerns, Commissioner Smith, um, I, my understanding is, and, and there's, there's certainly some of you have much longer history with this organi- with the whole development of that facility and that site than I do, my understanding is that the visitor's centerpiece was built and funded by the county. And that there's, that there's basically a, a, and I'm gonna have to review what we've got as far as the language that, how that was created and so forth, but my understanding, and, and I think the practice has been that the VIC piece has always just simply been run by the county and we've really not had a lot to do with that as a city organization, so that's why I think, I think that, that just, just to say where staff is at, the assumption is that the county has run that operation.
Under CHP?
And that they've, that we, you know, I don't know.
Under CHP and that agreement's gone, so now we have to have a new agreement, which is either with the chamber or someone else.
But it's still the county running it, they're just running it through an agent and so that's, that's, you know, it, of course, the commission has a prerogative to do whatever you choose, but I, I just, I think the staff, we've been just looking at it as trying to, we've worked as quickly as we could with the information that we've had, when we've had it, um, it's been a quickly developing scenario. The, the whole, going even back to when the CHP issue came up and, and the whole thing dissolved, uh, quite frankly, this, this whole program was not in our work plan this year. We've been, you know, Terry and, and I have been managing something that has been moving, you know, and changing almost seemingly on a weekly basis and, um, we've been trying to keep up with the moving parts. Um, because of the management agreement, the longstanding agreement. And, um, we've been trying to keep up with the moving parts, um, because of the management agreement, the longstanding agreement with CHP and what they were called before that. Um, it, it sort of ran itself, and so now all of a sudden, we're picking up pieces and trying to figure out how to do that. So, all I'm, all I'm saying, Commissioner, is we're doing the very best that we can. This is what we have to offer tonight, and we can certainly go back and do whatever you direct us to do. But I, the, and, and in the county's credit, they backed it quickly to try to find an agent because they had limited choices and limited time as well. So, that, that's really where this all comes down to.
I can figure out what I'd like to do, um, because I think that the key for the, the city is, if the visitor center is open, it benefits the community. It benefits the businesses in the community and, um, the, the tourist-related entities that we have. So, I think that's important, and I, I don't, um, and for me, ideally, the chamber would move in tomorrow and would all, or July one, it would all be perfect. But that's not a scenario, so this is what I propose, is that we keep the visitor center open and that i- i- if the county's willing to do this transitional, um, management, uh, even work out the legalities of, of that. And that that buys us time then to do further negotiation with the chamber or another entity. It allows the consultant report to, to come and, and get finished, uh, or get recommended, and we'll have some idea around, well, in fact, we have a midterm report you said in July. So, we may have some clue as to where they're headed and what the dawn time might be. Um, and, and again, I, we've had so many hits to our, um, tourism industry in Oregon City, I just hate to see, this would, this would be devastating. So, um, my prediction is, let's keep it open under this temporary, um, situation with the county. Um, and, uh, because it, it's, the, the people, because the people we have there, I trust, I believe in, they've been, we've gotten positive feedback from visitors who've been here. Um, they're, they're, uh, they're good ambassadors for, for us, and, uh, I think the county believes that as well. And then that buys us some time. Um, any takers on that scenario? Commissioner Smith? Are, are you, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, that was a new one.
That's a new one?
Yeah.
They're, um.
I, I just, I, I can't get over, um, you know, I, I want to, my, my concern the whole time has been keeping the visitor so, the center open through the summer. Um, but great, how do we do that? We have to have, I'm assuming, an agreement in place in two weeks. So, when is our next meeting to decide this? We can't decide it now, we, we're not gonna enter into agreement tonight, we don't have an agreement. We don't know other than word of mouth who this consultant is, I don't know anything about it. So, how are we gonna make that decision to just say move forward with, um, an agreement with the consultant that we don't know anything about until tonight? I, I, I can't vote, I can't support that. Um, so, does that mean we have to have a work session, you know, before the thirtieth or, or what? I, I, I find it really hard to be put in this position to basically say, well, you know, if you support it, um, it stays open, if you don't, it doesn't. Well, you know what, we could've, I, I can't imagine this discussion with the county about a consultant happened today.
Actually, it did yesterday.
Happened yesterday.
It did yesterday, that's.
If, if I might ask you, there's been.
I, I can't support it.
It's been, it's been changing personnel, and so that has really hindered the forward motion. Um, when, uh, the, uh, TDC director left and then Danielle Cowan, uh, Gary Bart was there and then Danielle Cowan, and they've been getting up to speed with their board and, and all of the issues. So, it's been very, very late and, um, yes, and I've seen the emails that Carrie's written, please get back to us, please get back to us. And, uh, they, they've just, it's, it's simply what it is. And again, to me, the bottom line is keeping the visitor center open to benefit, um, Oregon City. And I would.
The county.
Benefit Oregon City, it definitely benefits Oregon.
Well, Oregon City's part of the county, but doesn't specifically, you know.
It does really benefit.
It's a part of the state.
The people who come to visitor center are in Oregon City, they'll eat in our restaurants, they'll go to our stuff, they'll, they'll, it, it benefits Oregon City. Yes, of course, they get information about other places, but that's what you do in a visitor center. Um, anyway, Carrie, you had a comment?
I just have one point that I wanted to add, and, and we didn't meet with the county on Monday to talk about this issue that had come up about leasing, um, because it was something that is very fresh. And when we departed that meeting, I believe Danielle was going to go and actually talk to the chamber right then and there. And, and the idea was to have the chamber service the ninety day interim transition. Um, and I believe Danielle spoke with Amber at the chamber, and it was during that conversation that she found out that the chamber wouldn't be prepared to take on that interim ninety day. And so, that was the intent. And so, in that conversation, um, the county then, I guess, decided, well, we really do need a quick acting decision here. We have this consultant we've been working with, we'd like to have her considered as the, as the interim plan. And this just came to us yesterday. And so, the intent had been from, from the county as of Monday to talk with the chamber and see if they would consider doing the interim while we were working through the whole question of the lease. So, it really has been fascinating.
Commissioner Smith, you still? I don't have, I, I guess I don't have a problem if we, we, um, have, um, a, a meeting to have that presented to us by the county about what their plan is and who this consultant is, et cetera, and we can make a decision, but we can't make a decision tonight just based on, it's a consultant and it's gonna be fine. I, I can't do it.
I, I think the decision we can make is to direct staff to go forward, uh, to keep the visitor center open and bring us back any, um, contracts or recommendations that, that they have. I, I'm certainly comfortable with that.
We can't vote on that until then.
We, but we can direct staff to do that and to keep the visitor center open. You know, um, I, that, that to me is the key, I, I don't want it to, to shut down, I think it does, that's it. Well, then, I think, um, we need to open the doors to making sure that it stays open while it's still being physically accountable. And, um, so, I mean, no contracts, no agreements have been run out, there's got, there's some time that's going to elapse. Uh, you know, by the first meeting in July, I would be willing to, um, I don't know if you can do it work that fast, it's coming up pretty quickly, but perhaps you can have something to us by then. But I'm certainly willing to let it, to, to allow that to happen because I, I believe that the, the facility is too important to the community. So, Commissioner West?
Um, I, I'm supportive of what, uh, Mayor Norris is saying. And, uh, um, Rocky, I see it as, yes, this, this, uh, fiscal agent or this, uh, nonprofit that's going to be, the, these employees will be run through, it's still in agreement with our city, it's our building, it's our, you know, we're still half of that agreement. So, I, I think that that part will be worked out okay. And then here's a point no one else, no one's brought up this evening, I, I, I wanna work towards whatever is keeping the visitor center open, my direct staff, and we'll figure out his, uh, the fine details later, staff can. But, you know, they're in some ways doing us a favor because if we have one more empty building, what's the cost of an empty building down there with vandalism? Uh, and maintenance, it's just one more little black mark on our record. So, I, it is, it's doing a good thing and helping prevent, uh, an empty building.
So, do, do we have consensus to move forward than, um, letting staff negotiate, um, something that's out, that, that's, that meets all of the criteria we've discussed and bring back something to us at the first meeting in July with, with the sole intent to keep the visitors, to keep the visitor center open? Can you do that? Um, Mr. Fraser?
Mayor, uh, I'm just trying to come up with some idea or some concept here that would help Commissioner Smith and everyone be comfortable with what, what your, what your options are. To me, um, one of the things you could do is simply delegate to staff the responsibility to take all reasonable steps necessary to keep the visitor center open on an interim basis and to bring back to you as soon as we have it, the information, a confirmation of what it is that we're going to achieve. Because it allows, it, it's basically your overall direction is keep it open, take reasonable steps to keep it open on an interim basis and report back to us with what those consequences are. So, it's, you know, it's sort of a, it's an interim thing anyway, at worst case scenario, say you don't like it, it's still interim. But your overarching concern that I hear from every single party here is we'd like to keep it open. Um, and I understand Commissioner Smith is like, well, we wanna keep it open, but we also wanna know what are the details? And we simply don't have them now, but we can get them and bring them back to you, and at the same time, we can work toward trying to keep it open, uh, for the interim period. So, that's just a suggestion if that helps anybody.
Any objections to that, or, or, or going along that path? Commissioner Smith?
How long is the interim? I mean, is it till we have an answer and then it comes back to us? So, if it, if it comes back to us at our next meeting and we say, no, this is not the agreement, then we close the visitor center then? I mean, when you say interim, I mean, does that mean it's the whole summer?
I think the interim we're thinking about is the time between now and the time that the task force completes its work and has different, uh, uh, different options. It can also be, um, Commissioner Smith, it can also be thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, a hundred and twenty days.
Be until our next meeting?
It can be till your next meeting. Um, it might be a little harder to enter in some sort of agreement with them.
Next meeting, do we have the information that we have to make the decision? And we can't make a decision without the information of what we're.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what he proposed.
I understand, but when I say make all reasonable steps, honestly, what I'm saying is I'm trying to anticipate the unanticipated things that could come up in negotiations and to bring those back to you guys when we have more information, we just don't, we don't have it to give you, so.
If interim means maybe September, then I'm voting no. If interim means as soon as we get the information to make a decision about whether the agreement goes forward, I'll vote yes.
Could just be as soon as possible, I'm okay with that too.
So, are there any objections then to going along that path? Seeing none, okay? Staff, are you clear in your question?
Clear as we can be.
All right, thank you very much. And, um, and thank you for taking this on, uh, because I, again, I do understand how it's going your place, uh, you're already at full place to take it back. Okay. Uh, are we ready for the consent agenda?
We pulled item G, you're on.
I know, I'm looking, I'm, I'm just getting down there, my, my stroller always jumps. Okay, well, looking at the consent agenda, we've pulled off two of the items on the consent agenda, and it's.
What did it pull?
Where, um, the last one and.
G and I? No, G and.
It's G and J, I believe. G and J are pulled, so with those pulled, we now have a motion for adoption of rest.
It's all moved.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith on the consent agenda. Nancy, the vote, please.
Ms. Nissin?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes four zero. So, item G is the Declaration of Cooperation for the Loudlawn Falls Heritage Area Coalition. And the Resolution, uh, ten fifteen now contains the words that we talked about, um, at the work session, oops, I moved it, uh, which says, "To the extent practical," I just opened the wrong one. So, this, um, actually is a, uh, it's, it's essentially a non-binding resolution. It, 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 what it does is, uh, sort of shakes the hands of the, all the partners of the coalition who are coming together to, uh, work on the feasibility of the National Heritage Area. Um, you know, we've pledged ten thousand dollars, not a penny more, and, uh, it, everything that happens of a forward nature really will come back to this commission, um, as we move into a possible five oh one C three. I think I mentioned to you at the work session that, um, we have an RFP out for a part-time executive director, and I believe that the deadline is closed, and, um, I know we have a number of applicants, I don't know how many, and we'll be reviewing those and hopefully making a hire because we have enough money to, uh, we raised thirty thousand dollars from, I think, seven partners to be able to do that. So, are there any questions about this? Commissioner West?
So, this does not, um, what I was looking to, it does not, um, commit any more funds?
Nope. No, I think, um, uh, Commissioner Smith raised those questions at our work session, and, uh, on section three of the, the results of the resolution, it says, "To the extent practical," meaning whether we can or not, "the city will continue to provide an appropriate share of financial assistance and staff time to complete the feasibility study." So.
So, we have five thousand in at this point and?
And another five thousand, um, dedicated, so we have ten thousand.
Okay, oh, I see.
What, it's five thousand that's left over from, um, original commitments from the business license and then five thousand dollars from, um, Scott Archer's, Arch's budget. So, without me, I have a motion for doc, uh, for adoption of this resolution? Phil, Commissioner Smith?
Um, is, um, Clackamas County Historical Society one of the, um.
Partners?
Yes. They're not listed. So, where, where is Clackamas County, is that just assuming that that's part of it, because it's not listed there?
No, um, actually, those, uh, that is, that's not inclusive. If that list will span probably to, I mean, hopefully, maybe.
Is it state that's in?
No, it, that's just what'll happen. And so, when you see the, um, the list of, of people who've signed this declaration, there'll be many, many, and probably some we can't even anticipate right now. We hope that, you know, neighborhood associations, each community will sign it, and it, it's a commitment of people and recognition that this, uh, project is happening.
Okay, Smith, I have one more question.
Okay.
Um, and that is, what, if any, um, piece does the old tram project have in this new vision? Um, and the only reason I mention that, because the tram project was a CHP project, um, CHP doesn't exist. Um, but there's still very much the old board on, um, on the Clackamas County Historical Society Board. Um, and the, the text in the Heritage Coalition, um, talks specifically about ways of accessing the falls, et cetera, et cetera. And so, I wanna know if that's referring to anything along the lines of a tram.
Haven't heard that, nope.
Um, because, um, well, the, the, so I'm, I'm then getting the feeling that the tram is a dead project with the Clackamas County Historical Society, is that true?
I, I think, uh, the, the, you know, what I know about the Clackamas County Historical Society is that, uh, they're struggling to keep the, you know, to open the doors again. So, I doubt if they have, um, that on their, on their plate, it wasn't their project anyway.
Well, then, why did they make a presentation just recently at their board about the tram project?
Uh, that, that was interesting, um, I believe that they.
Sure, it was interesting.
Yeah, I believe they did that because it had never been done before, and it, uh, the tram project had never been presented to the public.
If it hasn't been done before, why did, was there an outcry about the whole thing? It, this happened just again recently, so.
What, that happened recently?
That the board made another presentation of it recently at a meeting.
No, the reason they did.
They're not pushing for what you just said a minute ago, then why are they still presenting it?
The reason they did is because it, it, many people in the community believed it was a sort of a secret project, it never, CHP never made a public presentation. And so, my understanding of the, of the reason for it being presented is that there was so much curiosity about what it was, what the consultant report had in it, that they decided as a public education piece to present that idea. It, it was not the, it was, it's strictly an educational piece.
Okay, my concerns with this, um, are, I, I, I mean, there's no doubt that the falls are the key element in this city. The, the, the one potential of bringing, and it's already, I used to joke with, um, not joke, but when we talked about the tourism in Oregon City and, and, um, our former director of the interpreter center would comment about the interpreter center being the most visited place in Oregon City, I, I always said, no, you're wrong, it's the falls. And then this, now we're focused on the falls. Um, and so, I know the potential of falls, um, and I'm excited about it. The, the problem is, is there's all these, all these different projects that are happening and discussions that are happening, um, at many different levels. And then this re, this becomes a whole new level, and it's hard to understand, um, how, you know, what we're really supporting. I, you know, in general, of course, I support, you know, um, a, a focus at the falls, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But there's so many other things in here that maybe I wouldn't support and maybe we shouldn't support in the city. Um, and so, you know, I, I don't feel like I really understand fully what the, what the mission of this group is and what the final outcome is. Um, you know, we're talking about Blue Hare Insight, we're talking about, um, all these other things, and these are all completely intertwined. And so, it's hard to see, um, how this all works together. how this all works together and,
and if I could just respond, um, that is how it's essentially, that, that's, that's how it begins. Um, the feasibility study is basically, you, you, that you will not receive, we will not receive a federal designation unless, unless the public accepts this. And what a, a national heritage area is essentially an umbrella over a designated boundary, and that's undesignedated. I mean, right now, there's interest from, um, Salem all the way up to Fort Vancouver, and that's a little overwhelming to me. But as we together, through the public outreach, which is why we need the staff person is to really pull that together. Um, but, uh, the federal designation requires several steps to go through. And this will never, it will have most, as most initiatives won't be successful, but this one particularly will not be successful unless all of the partners under the umbrella are, are part of it. And the cool thing about, uh, a national heritage area, one of the things that I, that attracts me is that it's non-regulatory and, um, non, uh, yeah, non-regu- non-regulatory essentially, and the National Park Service doesn't run it. We run it ourselves, so we define it. We define what it will be. I mean, it, it, in the, the websites are great. So if you go to the website and look up other national heritage areas, you'll see that, you know, they have many, many partners underneath them, and they all do their own thing. But they may have, uh, signage that's the same, they have the, the, the money that comes from the federal government each year to help them do, maybe it's a trail that links twenty-six of the sites, or maybe it's a canoe trail that goes through an area, or, uh, you know, at the minimum, it would be, um, signage that looks alike in this designated area, but we haven't even defined the boundary yet. So, and it'll take money to, to pull the pieces together, but, um, the partners are pretty strong right now, from the state of Oregon through Clackamas County, the two cities.
The, uh, tribes.
The tribes, yeah, that's, it's a really pretty strong, strong, uh, uh, organization, but, but you will be part of the group to help, you know, put it together, to give your ideas to it. But, um, it won't happen, I mean, the state of Oregon City, as many other of our partners say, it's asked to benefit probably more than any other community that's so far, you know, kind of under the umbrella. And the umbrella may get bigger along the way. Uh, so I don't see anything besides pos- positive outcomes for our community. Yeah, you know, awful lot of work and fundraising probably in the future, but we're not to the future yet. To help a little bit, um, someone else on there?
Yeah.
Mark, are you on there?
Um, well, the one last thing is this. I think it's hard to support something that we don't know what the boundaries are, but it ends up being all the way this, I mean, we don't have any idea what we're talking about.
You're supporting a, essentially, uh, you're supporting a, a dream, a concept, an idea. And it won't work unless we all support this idea. And again, knowing that all of the communities, uh, the people, uh, in the area will get to help define it. And there will eventually, I'm sure, be another organization of five oh one C three that probably will, will have to run it, but it will likely be made up of, uh, many, many, many organizations. There's your West.
Uh, I was gonna say, it, my simple analogy of this process would be, uh, Commissioner Smith would be similar. I was just at a, a, a meeting with Martha Schrader, talking, uh, economic development and the Main Street programs. And it, it, this would be similar, so we were talking to a bunch of brand-new Main Street managers from Malala and, and Kehanby last night that had been in Brown for just a couple, couple weeks to two months. But what it was, and we were having fun chatting, is it's similar to this, is that we already have all the pieces. We had all the pieces for our Main Street program in Oregon City before we started. We had arts groups, we had, um, heritage sites, we had, uh, business owners that were interested and active in, in doing things. Um, you know, uh, we, uh, we had multiple pieces, but when we got a staff person, ah, they pulled it all together and now they're making sense out of it. So there are many partners from the Ice Age, you know, Blood Institute, uh, uh, all over. And so this is just gonna pull all our pieces together and tell a story with what we have. I don't see it as, um, that we're going to reinvent new tourism, uh, individual tourism pieces. This is just gonna lay a nice map and, and provide continuity to the story of the, um, cultural and the history of our area. Went over big.
Okay, any further questions? Or am I have a motion? Moved on Resolution ten fifteen?
I move approval of, uh, Resolution, I don't see the.
It's ten fifteen.
Ten fifteen, supporting the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition.
Awesome. Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Nizida on the resolution. Is there further comment or discussion? Uh, uh, Nancy, the vote please.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Uh, the next item, oh, the next item is, uh, communications, let's begin with our city manager.
No, we don't have one more to do?
We do? No, we, right, I thought we took it off.
That's been taken out, I thought, oh. Oh.
Oh! Yes, it says, snap east to pull items.
Oh, here it goes!
Oh, I thought it was.
Sorry.
You're out of the consent agenda.
Oh!
For separate consideration, I'm sorry, I totally misunderstood you. I see our language was a little parallel, okay. Um, so the deed of conservation, oops, just jumped. Okay, got it here. Uh, this is the deed of conservation, it's conservation easement and a non-remonstrance for Gus Meadows subdivision project and, uh,
Uh, and the reason we, uh, took it off the consent for separate, uh, vote was, um, at the last minute, we have some changes that we needed to alert to you, so. And I may ask, uh, Mr. Kabizen here to help out on some of this. Uh, one thing we changed was on page three of ten of the actual conserva- conservation easement.
Of the deed itself?
Of the deed itself, yes.
Day rich ten?
Three of ten, which is in the center of the bottom pages.
Yep.
Uh, we have tricked in paragraph, uh, under section three, titled Roads and Access Easement.
Okay.
So that would be the fourth paragraph now, so we have struck that entire paragraph.
And while Bob's going to the next one, maybe get just one hit, this is a new conservation easement form and, and that's part of what, what's happening here is we're, we're getting used to it. And this is a, a, this particular piece was one that kept in as an option and should've been pulled out, but we, we just didn't catch it the first time through, so.
Is this true that this may be the city's first conservation easement? Will be granted?
If there was one before, it was not in a form that, that really, yeah, uh, did a good job of controlling what happened.
Okay, next?
Next, uh, I believe lastly would be on the ninth page of ten. We have changed the city manager being the acceptor and make that the mayor. And then having a city recorder, uh, signing it as well, just like you would a normal, uh, city document that the commission approves. And there is an asterisk at the bottom whereby the city of Oregon City grantee is stating, accepted on behalf of the city of Oregon City on the condition that the easement granted is free and clear from any taxes, liens, and encumbrances, which again is another standard clause that we would have on this type of document. So from now on, when you see these, that will be the, the standard form. And I don't believe there was any other changes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Neely isn't here because he has talked about conservation easements since, uh, I've worked with him, so.
Yeah, we'd be excited.
He would be delighted, I'm sure.
I, I, also, I guess we added exhibit C.
Do we have exhibit C?
No, I don't know.
Is that mapping?
That's something that. This was, uh.
Is it, what's it say on it?
Uh, exhibit C, upper right hand, Gus Meadows Landscape Plan located in the northwest quarter of section fifteen.
Uh, site plan.
No.
No, we do not have that.
It's not on the documents on your.
Yeah.
Well, then we need to.
Okay. Oh, yes, we could just maybe just cruise quickly.
Though I believe there was reference to that exhibit C in the document.
Document self-references it, and, you know, basically the conservation easement prevents a variety of different things, including changing the natural res- uh, but makes an exception for things required by the landscaping plan. And I'm gonna add one more thing, changing back something that, that, um, uh, the city manager I discussed that, um, probably is more appropriate for the city manager to sign, um, the, the easement as the administrative head of, of the city. And, and so I think we're gonna, um.
Run it forward. That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, the, you know, you know, the city commission still has to approve it.
They have to approve it.
Right, it's still them accepting it, but it's the, the power to sign that.
So you're gonna switch?
Wanna keep it then the way it was?
Yeah, the city manager.
The city manager and, and city recorder sign that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so is everyone clear on what we're voting on? And the changes?
Oh, by the way, the non-remonstrance is part of this as well, which is standard.
The non-remonstrance doesn't change. The, what changes is that paragraph on page, on section three dealing with roads and access easements is struck and a new exhibit C is added. And, and those are the, make sense of the changes.
Okay, yeah, I have a motion then on this document, acceptance of the conservation easement. Commissioner Neely, are you on the phone?
Okay.
Commissioner West.
I guess I'll stand in for him. I move approval for the deed of, of a conservation easement and a non-remonstrance agreement for the Gus Meadows subdivision project, city file number TP zero nine dash oh two with changes as, um, uh, stated by Mr. Cullison and our city attorney.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there further discussion? Nancy, the vote please.
Commissioner Nizida. Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Now communications and beginning with our city manager.
My dear, Madam Mayor, uh, just have a couple things tonight. Uh, the commissioners will recall, uh, the discussion with the county at the, our, your last meeting about the strategic investment zones. And you really only have tonight and at the very latest, your next meeting to provide us direction with how you'd like to proceed on that. Um, I'd like also, um, ask, I did send out an email today from the school district that I received, uh, I think around four PM this afternoon, so some of you may have been tied up by them and, and other things. Did you all receive that?
I didn't, I didn't see it.
Okay, so I will basically summarize what the district official represented to me. Um, the board did not hold a, an official vote on the matter and they're not required, uh, to vote, uh, under the, the statute doesn't require the county to get consent from the school district, but the board official or the representative that I talked to from administration predicted that it would not have passed if they had put it to a vote. He said the district, uh, had two, uh, had three primary concerns. The first one was the equity or disparity of the threshold amounts between the urban and rural areas, which was the same concern that I shared with you. And then they had two others and, and one was the potential loss of district revenue via the abatement, which probably isn't a surprise. And the third one that they were concerned about was the fact that the strategic investment zones do not have a sunset. Um, so once they're created, now what sunsets, of course, is the actual abatement on each individual investment. That's got a fifteen-year, uh, timeline, but, uh, the district itself doesn't have a sunset. So those were the three concerns that you had asked me to ask the district about, and I, I did, and that's what they reported back. Um, and normally you will not, uh, it will be very exceptional for me to ask you to give me direction in an up or down vote on something like this, um, without first putting it on the agenda, but because of the timeline, the fact that I just got this information from the district, I'd at least like to know if we have, um, well, I'd like to have some clear direction from you. And I think the county probably also, um, deserved to know how, how you, how you would vote rather than me reporting back because you, unlike the school district, you do have a, a say in whether to do this or not to do it, so, um.
Mr. Fager, you said that we might have an opportunity at the first meeting in July to do this under the deadline?
I think they, I think you have one, I think.
One more meeting? I would, uh, I, I'd love for them to get maybe a sense of it tonight, but if we're going to go forward with it, I'd like to see it in a real resolution. I'd like, I'd like to actually have a public hearing on it. I'd like it to be at a meeting and have the opportunity for the public or business to, um, comment on it if they wish.
Well, I believe the written resolution that they were asking you to adopt was in your, uh, packet last time.
Yes, I know, but it wa- but we didn't, it, it wasn't up for adoption, so I, I'd hate to do it tonight. Uh, I'd like to see it in a, in that, if, if we wanna go there, in a resolution form, so that it can be done in a, in those manner. If we have the time to do it, that's what I was asking.
Dan, do you think we have time to get in under the county's deadline?
Let's see if we're willing.
We'd have to have a decision by that meeting, that would be the latest.
Right, well, I think I, yeah, I understand, I understand that. Are, are we, do, do you want staff to drop something or are you not willing?
Mayor, before, before we proceed, and I'm not, I'm not trying to get too procedural here, but you remember at the last meeting, the county asked you to do two or three different things, and they had a, um, they had a, an agreement of, oh, gosh, a governmental agreement, they had IGA proposed in their, in their, uh, in the last packet. And so they didn't even have a resolution for you. What we could do as staff is either draft up a very short resolution with that as an attached exhibit. But if you're contemplating some new, uh, methodology or boundaries or anything like that, I, I need more direction from you if that's what you want. Otherwise, we'll bring back what they submitted as exhibits, which will be the meat and of, of what you'd be voting on.
Now that is the starting point of the discussion, and so how do you want to get staff?
I, if I've been noticing properly, I am not opposed to, um, scheduling a public hearing on the matter with the, um, currently worded resolution for the first meeting in July. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
I, I think, um, I think what staff wants to know is if we're not inclined to go there, then why should they do the work? So if you're way, if you're, so I guess the question, if you're seriously laying the options, then of course that's, that's okay to go ahead. Um, I'm a little disinclined at this point, but.
I'm not interested at all.
But I could be, I, I think I probably could be persuaded, so I, I could go over there on that. What?
Uh, I, I was, I was wondering what the, your, uh, Mr. Fager's recommendations would be.
I, I don't, I think if you've made up, if you all know how you feel and you're comfortable, um, giving direction up or down this evening, then I don't see a reason to, to delay them because they would probably rather know sooner than later.
Okay, and, and if we didn't do it now, we could probably reevaluate this, what, in a year, six months, or?
There actually is, I, I did ask about that and there's always another opportunity later if you wanted to, to be included in the district. There's no guarantee that you'd, they wouldn't necessarily have to allow that, but, um, and then I think Commissioner Neely was the one last time that suggested, well, maybe just that area in Beaver Creek, we could have that go in. And that's also another option for you. If you decide later you want that in, you can, you can have that as well.
But, so if you want it on the agenda on, uh, July, uh, whatever it is for, uh, uh, seventh, July seventh?
They, they wanna know if we're interested, so Commissioner Nizida, what is your?
Well, I, I indicated at the last meeting that, um, the strategic investment zone was skeptical. Um, which means I'm leaning against, but I haven't made up in my mind. Um, um, and I have found, um, public participation, um, you know, there are very many good minds that come to bring information to bear on an issue. Um, and I, you know, I don't discount the possibility that information could sway my vote. Um, so I, 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 I would be, um, no skeptical, skeptical, I, I wouldn't, um, I wouldn't preclude the possibility that a good argument could sway. So I'd be, I'd be, um, I'm in favor of having a public hearing on it.
I think we probably have three to do that, so I think that probably would, why we put it on the next agenda then, um, for, uh?
We'll do that.
Um, the next thing I need to do is I wanted to ask more and call our librarians to give you just a really short update on how the library is doing and what's happening with their.
Great, it's easy to do, it's a little easier, you know, because we have a temporary library.
Yeah, we are, um, almost completely out of the hilltop. And, uh, we'll have our final walkthrough with Craig Anderson on Friday and that will be, uh, maybe. walkthrough with Craig Anderson on Friday and that will be, uh, completely.
Wow.
And we are, I would say ninety percent moved into the Carnegie. It is, um, we can see what it's gonna look like and it looks fabulous. It looks so good because we haven't overstuffed it with shelving, so there's lots of open space and visual space. We enjoy the beautiful building that it is and, um, and there is, there's still material to browse, although as you know, it's not, you know, it's like one-fourth or something of what we had at the old location. But it, um, it looks really good, it feels really comfortable. Um, there still may be a few glitches on Monday morning when we opened. For instance, we were notified yesterday that our book drop for the outside of the building is backordered to August the second, so we had to cancel that order and place a new order with another company, but they still can't promise anything sooner than two weeks, so obviously it won't be there. So we'll like stick a little stick figure of me out there saying future sign or book drop or something where people can throw darts at when they want to deliver their books at midnight and we're not open, but, um, but for things, except for things like that, everything has gone incredibly smoothly and a lot of functions have, um, and people and volunteers have come together to make things operate really quickly and really smoothly. And I think that even though it will be small, that we will be very pleased with our temporary location, uh, particularly as we start planning for Eastham. I think that will, it will be, make for a good transition.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple more things. Um, did each of you receive a, a notice of claim letter from, uh, the gentleman named William Ber, Ber Hansel? And, um, I, this is, by the way, the first time I've seen it, so, um, th, this is something that we'll simply refer to our insurance carrier for, um, a determination. A little confusion for me because I can't tell, it, it's, last sentence says he's no longer in custody, but at the top, it, return address is the Clackamas County Jail.
Yeah, he went to, uh, I was at the trial because he had a claim against the judge and the city commission, um, he filed, uh, supposedly shooting after his vision, and so he was given seven contempt of court sentences in South Jam.
Okay.
I never watched that.
That'll probably be a fairly quick, um, determination for our C C I S, but you know where that's, where that's gonna go. And then lastly, um, Scott Archer, I wanna ask him just briefly to talk to you about the Bailey Estates playground.
Um, Eric Commissioners, at the, at the last commission meeting, Commissioner Neely actually raised a question about the Bailey Estates playground structure that, um, I believe has been removed. Um, Commissioner Neely indicated that he had heard from somebody, a, a citizen or, or somebody in that neighborhood, I believe.
She, she, well, had an application in for a metro enhancement grant, so that's where the connection is.
I think it was, it was misstated that the city had made the neighborhood remove that playground. Let me back up a little bit. That is a, um, privately owned neighborhood playground that the city does not own or manage or maintain. It was built originally by the developer and given over, um, as, uh, to the, to a private homeowners association. They, uh, the neighborhood has approached the city on a number of occasions about would we take that, that playground, uh, the whole, little park, I think it's about an acre, uh, would we be willing to take that over? Our policy, actually, gentleman came earlier and talked about a park property, he, um, misspoke about something. Our, our policy is that we, we try not to either purchase or accept properties of less than three acres. He said five, it's actually three. That's our minimum size standard, um, as a starting point. And the Bailey Estates Park is somewhere around an acre, I think, maybe a little bit more than that?
A little bit more.
It's, anyways, it's quite a bit smaller than our size. Um, but I, I just wanted to report back to the commission that, um, to, to Commissioner Neely's question that we, uh, Tony Conkle and I discussed this and, and I double-checked with all of the staff who may have had anything to do with that type of issue, park staff, um, planning, uh, building department, anybody who directed somebody who owns a private park to take a piece of playground equipment out. And to our knowledge, no city staff ever did that. They did come and talk to some of my park staff at some point and say, is, you know, what do you think about this? And, you know, frankly, the, the professional opinion was, it's, it's not in great shape, but we don't have any control over that. You can do whatever you wish with that. So, um, really that's, that's about it. We, uh, again, I, I guess the, the follow-up to the question is that we really never, we never asked them to, to remove that, nor would we have done so.
Not our policy to ask for removal of things.
Unless, unless there's some issue, some structure that you have to done, especially the red tide, the structure of going. The building official confirmed that he didn't do that in this case.
Thank you. Commissioner Zee?
And is it still there or was it removed?
I think it was removed. I think that it was removed by the neighborhood, by somebody.
I think that's what they said at the meeting.
But not, not because, not because we, not because we mandated so.
Um, and the one final thing, I'm just back, just briefly to the strategic investment zone. Um, one other fact that you might consider because you're gonna, you've probably seen a list of cities that have approved and some that haven't, and, um, it was a bit of a revelation to me that, um, when I was talking to city managers from Candy and Sandy and different communities in Clackamas County, um, the difference between rural and urban, um, and I think you guys have already, I see the heads nodding, so I think you've figured this out, but, um, I'm not exactly sure of the population limit. And when I was talking to, uh, the city manager from Sandy, he was enthusiastic because they were considered rural, and I think that had a big impact on some of the cities that were saying, yeah, we're at town us in. And when I talked to the manager in Candy, I said, well, how large are you? And he's, he's about fifteen thousand, and I said, well, how big do you have to be rural? And he said, apparently the size of Oregon City. Oh, is, is the, I, I think actually, I don't know what it is, it's, but we are not rural, we're too, too large to be rural, so, and it might be because we're in the metro boundaries. Yeah, Beaver Creek, there you go. Um, so, yeah. Anyway, thank you.
Um, well, continuing on that one, um, I really appreciate the staff recommendation. I mean, the staff recommendation believes that we could benefit from the destination of that Beaver Creek rural area. I'd like to, I'd like to see that. About the rest of you, more interested than just me?
Mayor, I thought about this a lot and so I don't have a, have to really wait. Um, I don't have, I don't see a downside for you to include the Beaver Creek, uh, area, uh, except to the, to, except to the extent that if this continues, I believe that the district needs to be, the zone needs to be contiguous. And I haven't looked at that map closely enough to tell you whether that will be some sort of a deal-breaking thing that will make this happen for the county or not. If you, if you don't include anything in there, it's the safest way to maybe protect yourself from that incentive of locating other businesses out of the city. Um, on its face, I don't see a problem with including at least the Beaver Creek area because it does meet the rural classification, but, um, I'd have to look at the map and make sure that it didn't have some sort of gerrymandering con, consequence, which, which if it does, I don't know at this point whether it does.
So are you interested in looking at it?
Well, so the Beaver Creek area that's within the U G B but was not in the city limits, is that what you're talking about?
It is in the city limits.
Okay, or within the city limits?
It's not in the city limits. It's not incorporated yet, it's in the U G B? Yeah.
So you're, we would possibly be encouraging a big twenty-five million dollar investment out now outside of our city limits?
No, because it's in our U G B. So we put annexes at a later point.
I, I think, like you told, that, that type of development locating outside the city limits, unless there's some...
So if you ask, if you made me ask you, if you made me tell you the name of my recommendation, do you know? Um, again, it's not real firm now.
The Beaver, the Beaver, the Beaver Creek Road concept plan?
Yes.
The, all the, all the implemented industrial lands are inside the U G B outside of the city limits, but they still have a county zoning on it, so no industrial development can go on there until they're annexed to the city. But even once they're annexed to the city, they still have the twenty-five million dollar cap.
Okay, okay, okay.
Because they were in, outside the U G B in two thousand and two.
Okay. Well, maybe, what are you considering? What I'm looking at, it'll be, it'll be interesting discussion. Um, are you, oh, are you on there?
Well, no, it's, I guess I would just say that, um, I, I'm not sure if the fire department or school district's plan would use would change with that, I don't know, and how that would affect their, um, 'cause if the fire department or school district says no, I say no.
That fire department won't change their mind.
I bet the schools will either, they may not.
I, I, the information I have is that they're well aware of all of these factors and, uh, the information I got today, you'll see on your computer when you turn on your city email, you'll find it on there. And let me know if you have any other questions that I can try to help you research, because it, it really is more of a value judgment and that's probably why I wasn't inclined to make a recommendation unless my arms were twisted.
Okay, thank you. Your report is finished? Okay, um, under the mayor's report, if you would, um, highlight the regional wastewater advisory committee letter. Um, although I wasn't asked at the meeting where this letter was presented, Nancy Crashhour gave me, um, good, um, review of the meeting, and I'm sorry, excuse me, but, um, this, remember that I'm the chair of the new regional wastewater advisory committee and it's, is this a member from, um, all of the, um, this, all of the city's entities in Clackamas County, uh, with, you know, C C S D one, Clackamas County Service District number one, um, and then we have, oh, I've already forgotten the voting half, we have, Tri-City has more, more of a thing, we all sit around the table. And, um, the, what, the, the county would like feedback on this, so that's why I wanted you to look at it. And so we have a new, um, work plan which the wastewater advisory committee did, um, tentatively, I believe, approve, but, um, actually I'm not positive about that. But this is it, they want feedback on, on this. And so this is the new work plan, they want that committee, uh, later noted in January seventeenth, and I believe the committee said that's a pretty stringent timeline to be able to get to this, but the one big thing is that number five, six, five, number five, um, this committee is going to make the recommendations to the county commission on, um, what investments should be made in existing assets, meaning will determine the future of the Kellag Creek plant in Milwaukee and not a separate committee. And I, the reason that committee, I think, and the other, uh, partners, we, I think were the last, uh, committees to comment on, because we had a number of, of questions about, uh, it, you know, was there gonna be staff to help us, or was there gonna be a technical committee, um, and, uh, how comprehensive was the work going to be? But the question, remember, we had three outstanding, or three very firm positions on wastewater, and this essentially is where those would be met, you know, where, what, what does the host community do, what, what, um, mitigations might happen, um, the cost accountability issues, and the sustainability and green management, um, issues, you know, uh, they're, they're very important to our communities. Number six addresses some of those. Um, you know, does Tri-City get to use the gray water or does C C S D, number one? So new capital investments, um, so the committee, um, exactly, is going to, now, quarterly, I think, is a meeting now monthly, because this new, these new sets of questions are going to require a great deal more attention than, um, resorting to the long, long range plans. So what comments and questions might you have? I hope you had a chance to look at this ahead of time and staff can feel free to comment on this, on this as well. Um, you know, we need a lot of help from Nancy Crashhour as we go through this, um, analyzing the, the technical stuff, remembering that the county commission makes the final decisions, but this, um, hopefully your recommendations from this committee will imperish in wait. I'm sure you'll see that.
I'd like to, um, propose that the city of Oregon City recommend both to the Board of County Commissioners and to this advisory committee to consider other questions that I don't see on that, um, on that letter, on that document. I'd like to, um, um, I think we should have a discussion on local control and grassroots democracy and the management of Tri-Cities and convert Tri-Cities from, um, a service district that is run by the Board of County Commissioners to a locally controlled service district, um, that is more into Oklage with directly elected board members from the communities, um, and, uh, um, where the, the communities, the Tri-Cities actually determine the fate of how Tri-Cities is managed and operated and funded, um, and managed.
I guess I would posit that before we could go there, that needs, that would need to not only be, um, you know, affirmed by all of us, but us, our first, Erzing, Buzzcom and Westland would also need to do that, because I don't think it would bear any weight unless it came, um, from the whole, uh, Tri-City contingent.
Well, I'd like to just start the discussion on, I mean, whether, whether we go to the two Tri-City, the three Tri-City partners first or directly to this committee, um, um, I mean, the start, this is, this, however the discuss, discussion gets going, I'd like the discussion to start.
Um, well, one, one of the things is that if the commission is inclined to do that, um, I would suggest that the place to start would be with the other two cities that form the Tri, Tri-Cities, because you, you wanna make sure that they, um, um, are of, of that same mindset, because we wouldn't wanna try to have two representatives and, and be the only of, one of the three Tri-Cities, so that would probably be the best thing for me to do is to reach out to their city managers or, or some of you to talk to their elected officials yourselves and see how, how they feel about that.
Well, so there's a, I think this is set before that, we haven't expected here.
Absolutely.
And so, um, you know, there are a lot of pros and cons to, to that and, um...
Well, why don't we, um, propose putting it on the, for the next work session?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we touch the water there, Nancy's wanting to be there. I think it's important for Nancy Crashhour to be present, um, she probably has the longest history with Tri-City, I think.
There we may, may also, I mean, certainly the, the county, um, I have no idea how amenable they would be to something like that, but there are different ways of achieving, um, greater representation other than just having a separately direct elected board, there could be some, some I G A, some sort of agreement whereby elected officials from each of the three cities could serve on the board or some, I, I think, if you're after more representation, that's certainly another possibility that may be more acceptable to some of the parties. I, I just don't know, but you're right, it's a big, it's a big topic. Um, so we probably should try to have a work session or something around that. Okay.
Yeah, definitely, there's, there's a lot of questions about it, any time, um, well, you know, um, because I think this committee, the regional committee, would probably need to have it come from the full entity, so start, start the work, we can figure out where it will go. Any other comments on, on these policy, uh, just in terms of the scope of work for that, for this committee? Okay, then I shall tell them that we're, you know, agreeable and, um, I hope we'll have a lot to report to you after each meeting. Thank you, that's that. Um, the, Commissioner West, did you wanna start your part?
Oh, oh, yeah, I don't, sure, mustn't be off.
All right, can. I, I go first.
Thank you, I, I don't care.
Okay, um, I, I think at your place, I'd have some copy for you, um, three, three pieces of paper, and, um, Air Path, the Metro Policy Advisory Committee, had a, an amazing, very fascinating, interesting panel, I think there were seven people, uh, two homegirls, one of whom you may know, well, um, Jim, Tim Breelove of Renaissance Homes and Mark Eelen of, um, Green Eelen, one of them, they had two economic, um, forecasters, one from Jerry and Eric Mogi, and you'll see, I think, he's working one of these. Um, and the metro forecast was in the T V, it was amazing, they, they were trying to use the, the idea of what the market is out there, particularly as you talk about the more industrial lands, so that was sort of, I, I think, a, actually in my suggestion, um, but we hear from the experts and, and see whether we really do need as much land as we can. So, um, I'll just sort of give you a summary of the highlights for me, um, everybody said that, you know, that things are actually a little better, but these are some of the changes that, uh, and the trends that, that they see. We're going to go more vertical, but not as high as it used to be. It's probably going to be medium density rather than very dense. Lead, silver, and gold are very important. And the big challenge is what the market wants is a twenty-two hundred square foot, one-level home where I as a single person or I as a retiree can live. And no developer can build this. They can't make it missile out. So what we want, they can't produce. The interesting thing about, well, Mark Eblen, who builds urban projects, said that there will be fewer large projects, that they'll be a lot smaller because there's no capital. The banks are holding off, of course, as you know. But he said that apartments are so hot that this is where the young creators are coming to live. And they're, they want five hundred square feet, they want it very rough, very raw. They want the pipes hanging, the worst problem in the building, which he rented like immediately, is the bicycle tire marks in the hallways. And that they have point five parking spaces per unit, and they had to sell them to outside people to fill them. These are urbanized that want, that know how to use bicycles and public transit, and that's what they want. And he emphasized over and over again, as every developer, that he had a gigantic shift now into building community. So that apartment complex of five hundred square feet units is a community for those people. And he said, that's what we need to do, that if it's a neighborhood unit or if it's the building units, build community. So apartments, we'll come back first, he said. Oh, the cluster strategy is a really important thing, and parking is going to be really rough. The cost for parking at fifty thousand dollars per hole just makes parking so unaffordable. So building in urban Portland is very, very different than building out here, as we mentioned. But the intent towards cottages and that communal living, where you may have a cluster of small homes with a shared garden space or something in the center, is beginning to kind of happen. No one really can predict what ageism is going to bring. We know that age will come and that, of course, the baby boomers are going to drive the market. But no one's quite sure yet where they want to live and how they will move the trends. But when you look at this one called Metro Economic Regional Outlook, it's really pretty gloomy and depressing. No one really saw the market coming back for three to five years. But you see that it's beginning to uptick a little bit. They talked about the last recessions and how long it took Oregon to get back. And it's, again, three to five years before and planet hits the targets that we had set. However, the other news is that Metro, as you here recall, rather than predicting that the population would be this, created a range. So it's a range of population, and even with the gloomiest projections, Metro, all of these experts believe that Metro is on, that Metro's predictions were on target with this range, that it is going to hit somewhere in the range and that the people that are predicted probably will come. The young creators were still coming to Oregon without jobs, without prospects for jobs, and are working in these five hundred square foot apartments, you know, a lot of technology stuff. So very interesting. Some of the challenges that we'll be talking about at NPAC are going to be, you know, we're working on a UGB expansion, maybe next year, year after, year after twenty twelve, isn't it? And where are we going to expand? Where I can see is clearly said that we have enough both job, land and apartment land and housing for the next twenty years. But yet, how do you make that decision? And we're wrestling over, we're wrestling on that. But anyway, fascinating stuff. I hope you'll find this useful as you look at the long-range plans that we need to make. Second, JPAC, the Joint Policy Advisor Committee on Transportation, passed after a few years of work the monumental task of the RTP, the Regional Transportation Plan. And how that affects our city, well, is the framework for the region on how transportation planning will come. But our RTP, which is now, I think we're just getting that underway, has to fit into the regional plan, so it has to reflect those policies. And the big one, the big one, and the elephant room is going to be, how do you reduce our carbon emissions by thirty percent? No one knows really how to do that. So that's going to be the topic of conversation around the table over the next probably couple of years. Those are those two big, heady reports, which are very intense work. Commissioner West?
Well, yeah, a question of the nation. I was on a little bit last month, and I saw that the county and the Oregon City kind of community center put on this form called Engage about the baby boomers and aging trends. And I was wondering if anybody in our, on our group got to go.
Don't listen, that's not my demographic.
Oh, not mine either. Not mine either, I don't want that two thousand square foot, one-level house, no way. It's all a dream. But, so I was just wondering if any of my colleagues were interested in hearing that report? If, I don't know if you'd ever come and do a little presentation, but I just thought the demographics on how housing and everything is changing with baby boomers might be kind of interesting. I'm really sorry, I couldn't go.
Yeah, that's what this, that's what this was.
You're right, that's right.
Yeah. I think the League of Oregon Cities had a fascinating, some of you were there last year, futurists talk about what the demands of the baby boomers is going to be in the future. And I actually tested that futurist theory with this panel because he said that the baby boomers, because they're used to independent living, are going to want to live on the edges of the community where they can look out on farmland and communal horses. And they said, maybe.
Maybe, because they want the urban services.
But they don't know, yeah. A lot of boomers that are very used to the urban services and don't want that anymore, but it's still all over the map and we're not old enough yet, I guess, to be a trend.
Well, I do have a report from C four, but since there is no C four next month, it could wait. If the commission chooses, I'll get it or not, I can hold.
Do you have anything burning?
Uh, no, well, it's an update. Okay, I'll get it.
That's what we need to know.
Well, I'll be brief. Okay, I had been saying at C four this year that we were talking about urban service delivery and who's going to deliver it and who's going to pay and how's it all going to work? We've had, oh, we had Metro speak one time, and we've had the county talk about their urban services from their perspective. So this past month, we had special districts, two people from special districts speak. First person was Kim Anderson from Sunrise Water Authority, and they were sharing urban services costs from their point of view. And first off, Sunrise Water Authority really isn't a special district. It's, I'm not the attorney here to give all the legal or legislative differentiations on it, but special, or water authority cannot be taken over by cities absorbed like a special district can. So Sunrise has only become a water authority since two thousand and seven, two thousand. But I'll tell you quickly what their perspective was, is they sort of three classes of clients. They serve urban unincorporated, urban incorporated, and in cities. And their challenges, and they're mostly in Happy Valley and Damascus, thought that way. They currently serve about forty thousand people, but their twenty-year, their capital improvement plan or their projections for the twenty-year buildup, they'd be serving a hundred twenty thousand, which is three times more, so more people than there now. So their challenges are rapid urbanization, like we're just saying, and increasing water demands of that urbanization, and that they were having problems with consumption patterns that are insensitive to price. So in other words, in that, I don't want to say, well, maybe more affluent or their income demographic, they just didn't care, they were going to pay whatever it took to have a green lawn. And there, another big challenge of theirs was restrictions on supply. And that got into similar things that all of us face in the water business with challenges or restrictions with Endangered Species Act and the fishes and for fish and in-stream flow levels being high enough to support fish life. And then the other thing that differs that where we are at from South Fork is they're what they call the prior appropriation doctrine or the first-in-time, first-in-right. And so in other words, they were having all this growth projected, and they are short on water rights and didn't know where they were going to get the water for all this growth. And they cannot be absorbed as a special district. So it was kind of interesting to listen to how they were going to, how they were going to accommodate all that growth. And then, of course, the issue is how they're going to, with everyone, is how they're going to pay for all the infrastructure and capital projects to serve the area. So that was Kim Anderson from Sunrise Water Authority. Then we had Mr. Lee Moore from Clackamas Water Providers talk, and...
Clackamas River Water.
And yes, CRW, sorry, Clackamas River Water Providers. And they have different issues. They have enough water, but their main concerns were they were losing territory. And they're mostly, your cent page report, concerned about losing territory in the south end of the Oregon city here. And so opposite situation, as Sunrise, they have the demand and no water and special, or CRW has the water and not the demand. So they are, both entities were concerned of how they're going to pay for infrastructures. And the point that I want to share, what Lee Moore said, and I hadn't had a chance to be in a forum with him for about a year, is they are very frustrated that they feel county policies are set without them in the room. And that they're in a very reactive spot instead of being able to choose their futures. And they feel very vulnerable as a special district. So I would say that this year, C four has grown, the group has grown from just cities to hamlets and villages and CPOs. And so special districts, they've been at the table, but now they're going to be at the table even broader. And so we keep working toward this broad conversation in September, you know, where we're going to go with all this. So that's that from C four. So we're off in July, August is a month to plan for the retreat, and September is the retreat, so.
Where's it going to be?
I think it can be cold in the camp.
Okay, thank you. Other reports? I think that we are through.